Testing, can you hear me?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. This is the Highland Park City Council in-person and virtual regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September 5th at 7:00 PM. Madam Perkins, would you please call the row?
Council President Thomas.
Here.
Councilwoman Tim Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Madica.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Ashapi.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to give members an opportunity to take a look at the agenda before we take action on item 3, which is the approval for the agenda. Please take your time. Prior to taking action on the agenda, members, Ms. Burton has a bit of information to share with us related to the agenda, if you will, Ms. Burton.
That's correct. Good evening, Council. On the resolution to sell the vacant lots at 106 at all on Buena Vista, the last... You can't hear it. The last paragraph of the resolution.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
No.
Mr. Lucky, are we amplified here?
He's checking them now.
I'm good. I'm good on mine.
Give us a little bit more volume. Testing, one, two, three, can you hear us in the back?
Can you hear me?
If you can grab us a couple of remotes.
Good evening, Council, on page 2 of the resolution to sell the vacant residential lots on Buena Vista, the very last...
Is your last paragraph?
Sentence. But now therefore be resolved, we'd like to include, now therefore be resolved that the city council approves the purchase agreement, comma, development agreement, and the sale of the vacant lots, with an S, located in Highland Park, Michigan, to New CC at the cost of $500 per lot. So it's already gone through planning, and what we're adding is the development agreement and the purchase agreement, and both of those documents are included. Yes, Councilman?
Council President?
Yes, please go right ahead.
Okay, so I get that, I understand it totally, I'm just trying to figure out why is that not in our packet?
And that is clearly an error.
It's in your packet?
No, it's not here, ma'am, it's not here.
The sale of the property?
That is in there.
In there.
The verbiage is the error.
Okay, okay, so...
Buena Vista properties.
Okay, so one second here.
Okay.
Because I went through this thoroughly, I did not see the development agreement, I didn't see that at all.
It should be at the back on purchase agreement.
You said it's at the back of the packet? On what page is that on, Ms. Delphi?
I think it's 30.
Page 11 is the development agreement. And page 1 is the purchase agreement.
The summaries and the markups of what this is going to look like. I mean, is the planning commission the one that gets to see that? Or should the public be allowed to see that as well, too?
To see what?
What the development is going to look like, what the markup is going to be, where the drawings and the rendering.
It's inside the packet.
It's inside the packet.
Are those editions of that document?
Yeah.
I believe there are copies of that floating around in the public, I see citizens...
It's in your packet.
Holding it up, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there are lots of that out, okay.
Okay, all right, I see that.
The Council President, I have a question.
Right ahead.
It's supposed to say on this page?
No, on the resolution, so the very first page.
Okay.
But then the end of that resolution is on the second page.
Okay.
So the very last sentence.
Okay.
That's what we're seeking to add, that city council approves the purchase agreement, comma, the development agreement, and the sale.
Are we selling this at a discount, or are these lots being sold at market rate?
They're being sold at $500 per lot.
Okay, that's not market rate, okay, so that is a discount.
We're not dis... well, right now, we're seeking to add that to the resolution. We do have individuals here from New CC to respond to questions and address whatever concerns you have, Councilman, so...
I'm not trying to give you a hard time, Ms. Delphi, I'm just saying, you know, this is a major development.
It is.
Yes, sir, I understand, we can actually move this back, if you want to move this back to another meeting to get it straightened out, we can do that, but I wanted to bring this up at the beginning of the discussion for approving the agenda, because they uncovered this shortly before the meeting started, and it was... The question was raised, do we walk this on to members, or do we push this back? So again, this is, right now, we're on item 3, the approval of the agenda. It's up to members how they want to deal with that.
Okay, it's just the additional language being added, so that's all we're requesting. It's just the additional language being added, so that's all we're requesting at this time.
Okay. All right.
So having had an opportunity to look at this, I'm going to turn the floor over to members.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashapi for the approval of the agenda as it stands. Do we have support? With amendments?
With amendments.
With amendments.
Second.
There was a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashapi, seconded by Councilwoman Manica for the approval of the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Council President Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tim Robinson.
No.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
No.
Councilman Ashapi.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. For item four, the approval of the proposed minutes, Council, I'll give you an opportunity to review those. At your leisure, the floor is open to take action on item four, the approval of the minutes for the in-person and virtual regular meeting that was held on August 21st, 2023.
Yeah, here it is.
You can sit at my.
Council, at your leisure, by item four. You can take action on item four. This is the approval of the proposed minutes for the in-person and virtual regular meeting held on August 21st, 2023.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashapi. Do we have support?
Support.
Have a motion on the floor for Councilman Ashapi, support by Councilwoman Manica. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Council President Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilman Ashapi.
Yes. Motion carries. It's the point in the agenda every week where we open up the floor to Mayor McDonald to address council and the citizens. Mayor McDonald, are you available?
I'm here. I'm here.
Ma'am, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, citizens, council, and administrators. Uh, I promise to be very brief. Um, I have just two things. So today, the auction site went live this afternoon. You can view the properties that are up for sale. There's plenty of them. The bidder registration and login is as follows, and you can write this down for those who can here. HTTPS at Portland backslash backslash tax dash sale info backslash login. And it is up on the website. Uh, the, uh, the link will be on the website. So if you, this is the preview, um, part of the auction. The actual auction will happen, uh, I think the date is the 26th, but I don't want to be quoted on that. But we are in the preview section, and the properties are listed and on the website as well as on the website for the auctioneers. So this is where you will go and find, uh, the pictures of the properties. Uh, I think starting bids. And so this where, that's where you will find that. Also, join me this Saturday, September 9th, for our last Walk the City for the summer. We will meet at Puritan and Woodwork at 9:00 AM. That's our last one for the summer. So if you want to walk and talk, please come out on this Saturday at 9 o'clock. Next week is, of course, Coffee and Conversation at the Dunkin' Donuts. That's at next Wednesday at 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Come on out. We've done real well with these, so I'm hoping everybody come out and hold the conversations, get your questions answered by the mayor, um, anything related to the city administration. Um, I have just one thing that I want to bring forward. Um, it is very important that we start looking at how we're going to continue to move this city forward. Uh, as you know, developments and/or, uh, we need tax dollars to grow. So hopefully, we're going to continue to progress and, uh, get the city moving forward. We need those things, um, in place in order for us to grow. You guys have a great afternoon.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Uh, so we're going to move into citizens' participation right now. This week, folks, Mr. Ashapi, you had something?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I just have a, a quick question.
This is for the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Councilman Ashapi has a question for you.
Um, Madam Mayor, has the list of houses that are to be auctioned been sent to this council and approved by this council? Or was that something that was just done on its own?
Uh, the, when you approved the auctioneer and the properties, uh, that was the approval for us to move forward with properties that are au- are to be auctioned off, housing.
Okay. Okay, so, so Madam Mayor, I, I, I would just be frank and honest with you. Uh, you know, I did not approve of this particular auctioneer. It came from a third party. I do not approve of it then. I did not approve of it now. Uh, the process, the, the process was done improperly. Uh, it should have been put out to bid, and, 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 and what you picked to sell of city property, council should not be left out in the dark from what it is as being sold to the city.
Okay, I'm, 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 I'm asking, please, put that during council affairs. I don't want to, we have a full house tonight.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going on the rampage.
Madam, Madam, Madam Mayor.
That things have been done improperly, and we are going on a path that's going to cost us the property.
Yes, sir, and I'll make sure that we have plenty of time during council affairs if that was something that you wanted to address in some great detail. Because we have a full house tonight, we're going to move into citizens' participation. I'm going to hold the audience to two minutes so that everyone has an opportunity to speak, and then we can also address the agenda, and all participants can be here. Please, I don't like interrupting people in the middle of a thought. So as we get into that two-minute time window, I'll give a grace period of 30 seconds, but typically, there's somebody behind you that also has something that they want to share as well. So for those citizens who would like to discuss items that are on the agenda, that will be, um, the tabled item from August 21st. That's the resolution to sell the, um, vacant residential adjacent lot at 55 Avalon under the mayor's office. This is the res- uh, resolution for the designation and approval of a street administrator for Act 51, resolution to reappoint members of the TIFRA board, resolution to add new appointments to the TIFRA board, uh, resolution to reappoint members of the Police and Fire Commission, and then there's a Department of Community Development, a resolution note to sell the vacant lots, uh, on Buena Vista. If there are citizens in the audience who would like to, uh, voice their comment on these agenda items, if you wouldn't mind queuing up at the podium, I'd be glad to entertain you right now. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to comment on article five. My name is Bonice McBrock. I am a partner with Mama Shumayim, and my company is Every Child is a Genius. I am an educator, community activist, and institution builder for over 40 years. You can't hear, can you hear me now? I'll start again. Well, I don't have the time, so I'll start where I am. For the past couple of weeks, I have pondered, why PMP wants to fight over a $500 piece of property, especially when they have over 100 parcels of land and houses? Why a lot on a block that you know the Avalon Village community has maintained, cleaned up, removed all types of debris without ass being asked or required? Why do you still want it? And why is it so valuable? Mama Shu and a plethora of volunteers for over five years has built a garden in a food desert and installed free solar lighting in a silly, in a city that removed residential lighting. For those of us who have a semblance of power, it is our time to stand up for what is right, but not necessarily what is so-called legal. Remember, our enslavement was legal. This is our time to be on the right side of history. Choose to stand up for what is right. Remember, Mr. Lopez said last meeting, if he withdrew his $400,000 in taxes, you Highland Park will be broke. Give 55 Avalon to Mama Shu and the Avalon Village Company. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me take pause. Just something important that I need to, um, to address. At present, item five is a tabled item.
Yes, sir.
In order for us to have a full discourse on it, members of the city council will have to agree to remove that item from the table and bring it back to the floor to discuss it. You get text messages from lawyers. So I know there are a lot of people in the, in the crowd on this, as it, as we have a pre-talk on it, but the item has not been removed from the table, and so it's on the agenda, but council hasn't decided what they intend to do with it. So if there, if there are other people that wanted to address the same issue, I can look in your eyes and feel your passion. The energy that's coming towards the front is heavy. So, um, please bear in mind with us on this, there will be time at the end of the council meeting for more people to speak. Are we all good on that? Is there anybody else that wanted to discuss some of the other items on the agenda? Item five is tabled, but.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
If it was possible, if you could allow them to go ahead and speak, because at the time at which they have an opportunity to speak at the last citizens' participation, we would have already been on voted on this matter after we bring it back from the table. So it'd be too late.
Can I get a consensus from members with a show of hands, please? Just a show of hands if they would prefer to do that? I see one hand up.
Want to speak?
This is, this is to allow them to speak. I'm, I'm, right now, I'm just talking to the.
Talking to city council.
Yeah, I, so I see three hands up. So that tells me at some point, again, we're deviating from the script, but it tells me at least three people are going to want to pull this item from the table. And Mr. Ashapi has made a point that he feels that he wants to have people heard, and I think, considering that, you saw, you saw at least three people that are going to pull this from the table. So ladies and gentlemen, form that line. Okay, yes, ma'am, please, come on up.
Hello, Council.
How are you?
Uh, my name is Rashonda Hayes. I'm the executive director of Village Detroit, and I would just like to say that I'm here to speak on behalf of Article, well, Agenda Number Seven, and I just wanted to show my support in the Department of Community Development. I, uh, I have adopted the, I'm not, most of the people in Highland Park are familiar with the park as Monterey Park, but I actually, my organization adopted the Alvin Casey Park a little over a year ago, and so we've had a lot of things going on at Alvin Casey Park, and NEWCC has been one of our biggest supporters, so we really like to be here and support them. This is going to be a great thing for the, uh, city of Highland Park, but the affordable housing, and so we just want to say that we support that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on an agenda item prior to session? And sir, would you please introduce yourself?
Good evening. You guys hear me?
Go to the microphone a little closer, yeah.
I'll hold it up here.
Yeah, yeah, you can hold it.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Little better. Got to get it close to your old equipment, sorry.
Closer, right here?
Yeah. Or you can just hold it, whatever's more comfortable.
Well, I got to, I can put some notes.
Okay, fine.
Under two minutes.
Sure.
Okay, so good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. Um, my name is Rick Lopez, and I am the owner of Premier Michigan Properties. Um, before I start, I'd like to apologize for stuff that I said last week. The phone call that I was on, a Zoom call, was screeching in my ear. I could barely contain my thoughts as it kept bouncing back in my ear. Um, I didn't mean to offend anyone, but, um, what I'd like to do is say that, um, I wanted to give you guys a history of what we're doing. Um, Premier Michigan Properties was started to buy properties in Highland Park and refurbish them and put them back into the community for rent. We bought around 40 homes and have worked on each home one at a time. Uh, we've put back together into the community 15 homes so far. We take homes very slowly. We take them, we refurbish them to what they used to look like, if they're older homes, meaning that we don't strip them out and take all the, you know, the casings and all, everything's still intact. And once the house is in, you know, renting order, we provide air conditioning, we make the floors beautiful, everything new, new windows. Uh, we also ask for rent that's less than market value, meaning that most of our homes rent from between $1,000 to $1,500 for very large homes. So that's our goal here, and so far, we've done 15 homes, and, um, during COVID, we stopped for around three years, and then we have just started right now, you know, remodeling those. Uh, when we buy a home, we immediately, it's all our homes were purchased from the Wayne County Treasuries from California. We have no idea who they are, what they are. All we can tell is a picture that you see so with that in mind, we bought maybe 40 homes, and, uh, we have taken each home and make sure that the house is treated accordingly to its history. If the house is newer, we do it really quickly, we put it back in on market. We have not sold one home yet. So we're not here to try to make quick money. We're here to actually provide the community with maybe 40 homes, and we will leave and leave a manager, property manager, to take care of.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anyone else that would like to be heard?
Good evening to city council, to, uh, the residents, uh, to any others that are interested, and also the mayor. My name is Mama Shu. I'm the founder and CEO of Avalon Village, located between Woodward Avenue and Second. I'm here to speak on item number five, which speaks about the adjacent lot at 55 Avalon Street. Um, I want to give you some history, too. Uh, in 2010, 11, and 12, uh, the administration, not this administration, granted, uh, Avalon Village, and actually the Moon Ministry at that time, beautification awards for cleaning up the block. I got it three years consistently, as well as a Home Depot card for $100 because we've been working in the community fixing up that entire block. Uh, Mr. Lopez, uh, from PMP Management, I've been over there way earlier than him. He just bought properties in 2017. I was born in Highland Park. I am a resident, and I am here to transform blight to beauty. Uh, last week, it was spoken about how, um, it, I was illegally, uh, on the property. Many years ago, I've been illegally on the property of Highland Park for years, cleaning them up. I spent thousands, literally thousands, blood, sweat, and tears. Uh, the homeless brothers over there at the rescue mission used to help me. My children from the school system used to help me to clean up that lot, to clean up that property. Um, so for it to be a hazard or to be liable, it wasn't liable when I purchased a $400 dumpster several times. I put my lawnmower on there. The hazard was the stuff that was actually on the lot that we cleaned up, and we've been doing this consistently. Mr. Lopez knows exactly what he's doing. He's letting that property sit, and if it's anybody who's adding blight to the city, it is him. I have consistently been working on Avalon Street consistently, and as a matter of fact, have worked with some of you illegally on property in Highland Park because we deserve somewhere clean to live, we deserve orderliness, and we deserve safety, and that is my only goal in Highland Park, period, is to just do my part as a citizen, and that's what I've been doing. But I feel victimized because we illegally, but he can spread, uh, blight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on item four of the agenda? Agenda items only. How are you, sir?
Hi, how are you?
Very well.
Great. Um, it's just funny that, um, after the last time we were here, I just was thinking about the whole situation that's going on and then just pondering about some of the things that were said on our end, like Mama Shu just said about it being illegal. It just baffles me that, because I was there to do a lot of that cleanup, but it just baffles me how it is illegal to put. but it just baffles me how it is illegal to put something so godly, a garden and lighting in a place that was rat infested. To me, it just sounds like the beginning of the Bible. There was light and there was a garden. And, uh, what Mama Shu been doing over there, like the other, the other young lady said, it may be, uh, illegal, but it is righteous. And I just, when I think of it, it's just, i- i- it bothers me that that is considered wrong today. And I do understand how things should be done decently and order. But it was already disordered, and we was bringing it to decency. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carmel, and the little boy behind me is one of the beneficiaries to Avalon Vill- Village. I just want to speak on behalf of the children in this area. We wouldn't have a safe place for our children without Avalon Village. And also, just in the situation in Highland Park, our children don't have safe routes to go to school because of out-of-state investors that's buying the land, that's not keeping it secure. So I just wanna make sure that you guys are holding them accountable and also making sure that we are putting our children first. That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Greg Morris. I'm a property owner of Highland Park. And I am coming for you to support the new CC, the new CC project out there trying to do Highland Park. Uh, it's a, uh.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Yes, sir. Sorry about that. Okay. So I'm here before you to, uh, to speak on the project New CC in Highland Park. Right? They're taking vacant lots, they want to purchase them and build, you know, homes on there, you know, affordable housing. And so I stand for you, I'm a property owner. My name is Greg Morris, and I, uh, support that new CC project. Thank you for your time. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon, sir.
My name is Laura McGee. I'm a resident here in Highland Park. I didn't come to here to speak on the fifty-one, um, Avalon Street, but I just gotta say, um, I remember the first city council meeting I came to, big hype, very first, I moved to Highland Park twenty-three years ago. Very first council meeting I went to, it's like, oh, God, we get a casino. It's gonna save Highland Park. It's gonna save Highland Park. It wouldn't save Highland Park. The people who are gonna save Highland Park are the long-term residents. People like Shu, people who are doing it, doing more than what the city's doing. She's taking blight and making it beautiful. We need to recognize that. Not only that she does that, she influenced me to fix up my lots. I live adjacent to four lots, and I cut all of them. I don't have a riding lawnmower, I have a push lawnmower. I'm out there cutting. So it's not the people, Superman is not coming here to save us. It's the people that look like you and I who are gonna save this community. It's the people who have been here, people who have an opportunity to leave but stay because they love Highland Park. Those are the ones that's gonna save us. Nobody with a little, own a few properties, that don't live in our cities, gonna save us. So y'all need to look around and think about things like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one else coming up to the podium, oh, go ahead and, I'm sorry.
Just one more, council president.
How are you, ma'am?
Good, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
I am Princess Davis. I'm a resident of Highland Park, and I'm gonna be the bad guy in the room. I'm gonna speak again, Mama Shu getting that property at fifty-one Avalon. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
I am highly disappointed that the council has taken this long to get that book, that, uh, property sold to PMP, whoever was first. It doesn't make sense that we're, uh, playing favoritism. If she wasn't first, she wasn't first. I love what she's doing. We're talking about how we wanna move the city forward, how we want tax money coming into the city. He pays his taxes, he brings money in. And I'm not just speaking for PMP, cuz I don't know them. I'm speaking for anyone who would've been in this position. If I would've purchased the property before she did, or tried to purchase the property before she did. So that's what I just wanna speak on. I'm highly disgusted that you guys have taken this long to sell this property to the person who came first and who's bringing tax money to the city. That's it.
How you all doing?
Pretty good, pretty good. Um.
I ain't, I ain't started talking, but, um, I'm Marcel. Um, so pretty much, I don't know, we could speak on the ordinance, I don't speak on the ordinance you all present us with for marijuana.
No, sir. That's not on either.
I was just saying, I was, I'm moving forward. I was like, no, I can't. Thank you.
I wish we could, but we can't.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. But, um, long story short, um, to try to help you all out, um, overall, um, I feel like, um, it was something put in place for the ethics commission, um, to be in place for this, and then also CDACs for, um, twenty different people that you all are supposed to appoint. You saw supposed to select who you want to be on there along with the mayor to kinda help with these situations along with the block clubs the mayor's been trying to push this year. Because overall, the charter, you all know, me and some of the few citizens have been complaining about that charter, cuz it really don't have enough teeth for backbone. Because in the charter, it does say that whoever lives in the house next to it is the property. So it's kinda like, it puts you all in a situation to where, um, you all have to kinda, your hands are tied, I can't make the decision. But overall, with TIFIL, the most important thing, I want you all to understand is how important TIFIL is. Um, the development going off the Jones Greenway, I believe the twenty million dollars that was allocated, I believe it's with TIFIL, but I know TIFIL has a big amount of money going through the Brownsville development. Um, so that's one of the things I wanna make sure people are aware of, with these people being appointed, cuz I know no one spoke on that. But these people being appointed is gonna be over a large amount of development. Like, say, Dan Gilbert, Mike Ilitch, they're using the TIFIL funds for Hudson or Black Bottom. So while we're in here talking about a lot, um, it's like the mayor was saying before, it is some major developments that we should be looking at. So I do kinda agree that these things should've been handled, but it wasn't in your hands. His application has been pending since the last, possibly two councils. So that's what I hope, in conclusion, I hope it's a full review of all applications for properties. And then it's also, um, just a background to see who wants the property and who doesn't. So this isn't an issue moving forward, because I'm pretty sure it's a lot of people that can come forward on some parcels, and it could be some disputes, and we don't want those type of legal issues. So, um, good luck tonight. Um, I hope you all move forward for council meeting, um, cuz four hours is ridiculous.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You must haven't been to Flint.
Hello, council, my name is Jamar Jones. I wanna thank you for an opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, but I just wanna talk about Avalon Village. Before, it was a block, it was a lot. And that lot was not in the condition that it was today. And so last week, I had the opportunity to go to Avalon Village and explore it in its entirety, not just for what it is now or what people believe, believe it belongs to. But I, I gathered a group of eight boys together, and we, I began, I became the quarterback. I have four receivers on one side, I have four receivers on the other side. Had it not been for a lady named Mama Shu, who decided to take a lot, right? We're talking about a lot, yeah, brother, we're talking about a lot tonight. A lot before it was a block, the Avalon Village block. I got those eight boys together, and they, they, they clung to me like they had never clung to me before. Like, like any, like, like any, I've seen these young boys before, but it was something about the continuity that we found in this, this day at Avalon Village, right? The, the, the lot that became the block. It was lot by lot that Mama Shu took these, you know, broken down lots and made them something into beautification, from blight to beauty is the phrase. Last, the week before last, before I got the eight guys and we played football, I was there for a, 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 a event called Hill Camp. And it was in that camp that I took my two boys and my, and my, and my children around that garden. And we picked fresh vegetables. We took them home that night. We cut them up and we put them in our spaghetti that we would cook, uh, that, that we would've had to purchase otherwise, having that guy from that garden. So I'm gonna stand here and ask, as you hear us, feel us, hear us and feel us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. My name is, uh, Gregoire Eugene Lewis. Can you hear me? So, um, to go back to, uh, a couple of things that I heard someone say that, uh, a lot is just a lot, and people not paying taxes on it, and things like that. I, I, uh, I travel extensively, and, um, some of the things, when I'm out of town, people say, where you live at? And I, I tell them, I live in Detroit, and they ask me about my career, and I told them about Highland Park. And, and one of the things, and this happened to me in Memphis with the Memphis Grizzlies basketball team, they asked me, have you ever heard of Mama Shu? Because they, they had a, a program, and they brought her up. And they hope, the whole basketball team was at awe of what she's done in the community. I, I've been to California, and people ask me about her because they seen her on Ellen, and how she took that neighborhood and transformed it. And it costs money to maintain these lots. And so to, and the tax dollars, the maintenance that she does, the woes that she's gone through to, to, to keep up what she has, let's not forget what a couple last month or the month before, how many people were on Avalon Street partying? And, and that was a boy from South Florida that happened, that I know. He came all the way up here to have a party on Avalon Street in the entire United States. And all the black communities around the world saw that because they all followed him, millions of people. So it's not just a vacant lot. It's a, it's a movement that she started that helped a lot of people come to the Highland Park and buy property here and wanna be a part of the movement. So I think that, that's the bigger picture of, of what she is and who she is. And, and mind you, this started in two thousand and eight, where she came to down and asked about vacant lots, and how do I buy them? And, and what does this mean? And what should I, what should I buy first? And we, and, and we sat down and we, and we helped her so that she can be who she is. So we continue to need to support her, not just for this lot, but even moving forward, we're donating to her.
And with that, sir, I hate to interrupt people, but I gotta, I gotta stick to the, I gotta stick to the program. Thank you very much for your comments. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer. I'm a Detroit resident. I lived in Highland Park for quite some time. Like many of us, I went away and I carried on with life. I now have a degree in global business development. I'm certified through LSU's Agriculture Department to grow food, and I just completed a scholarship that will teach school districts and community gardens how to build programs that are sustainable. This is all only because I saw Mama Shu on, on TV, on Ellen from Texas, to which now I have moved here to be a part of that movement that you're talking about for our farming businesses, for our communities. And so what I wanna leave you with is that her work is not done. It is also bringing money to the communities, it says, we employ jobs. And I want, I want you to understand that you have a social responsibility. Everything that you're listed off, that you're operating these events, you're very, you're very.
Ma'am, you're supposed to direct your comments.
And so what I would hope that his company would understand is, is that you do have a social responsibility to this community that is allowing you to profit. If you can't build your buildings around the garden, you know, like, you, you just have options. I'm willing to bet that the people that live in these buildings that you're willing to bring, that you're wanting to bring, would also enjoy these green spaces, would also enjoy this healthy food. So really, she's the wind for you if you're actually looking long-term. That's all I can say.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just have a question on, uh, item six.
Yes, ma'am.
We are talking about reappointing these people. Supposing in this group, there are a couple of people that you don't want to reappoint. Do we have to take them as a group, or can we take them as individuals?
Um, that's a fantastic question, ma'am. It was, it was delivered as a line item. So it's a resolution. So Resolution B would have Mr. Lewis, Ms. Robinson, Mr., uh, Ms. Brown.
It doesn't matter which, which group you take, A, B, or C. I'm just wondering, do we have to take them as a whole, or can we take them as individuals?
It was presented as a, it was presented as a single line item for all of them together on this.
But you're serving the citizen.
Yes, ma'am.
We may not wanna, we may, might not wanna deal with him as a whole like that.
All I can tell you, Ms. Washington, is what's on here.
I know what's on here, but I, I'm asking the question. That's all I'm doing, asking questions. So in other words, you can't change anything about it. We have to take them as a whole if you accept it, right?
Um, the way it stands today, ma'am, we get this list, we get these action items.
I understand all of that. I'm just asking the question. Is there anything we can do about it, though that we don't have to take them as a whole? We can take them as individuals.
I don't think I can answer that question for you. Yeah, I can find out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else moving towards the podium, so I guess we can go to item, okay? Yes, sir.
How you doing, council? How you feeling today?
Very good, yourself, sir?
Um, we're here talking about the property on Avalon today. I'm sorry, my voice is out. I'm, I've been performing crazy. Um, I just wanna say that this thing is not about, it's not about race. It's not about money. It's not about politics. I just wanna pose one thing to the council, like, if you could implement, if you could implement the same thing that Mama Shu done on that block, on every block in Highland Park, then what would we have? We would have a better community, correct? Could you, could y'all agree with that? If we could implement what she done on one particular block, on every block in Highland Park, our community would be better like that. She got the blueprint, and the blueprint comes from here, from Highland Park. So we got all that we need right here. Brilliant, brilliant council. Brilliant, brilliant community. If we all just come together and put our minds together, we can change everything that we wanna change around here ourselves. And for some individuals that didn't keep up that property, that property would've been looking crazy. Y'all would've been coming on there, finding her, finding somebody about it. I'm just saying that put that property in the hands of some people that care about it. Some people is gonna do really right by it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, council, seeing nobody else coming to the podium.
Good evening, council. Good evening, fellow polar bears. I just came to, to say a quick word regarding, uh, I believe it's item five. Uh, with that home, I couldn't get through on the, uh, the Zoom thing. There is a lot of things that our city is lacking. Uh, school system, infrastructure. We've dealt with years of, I guess you'd call it disenfranchisement from our own people and from other people outside of our community that have used it for their own gain. If you were to take some of the people that are out here actually fighting to try to make Highland Park the fantastic city it once was, and you start adding up the dollars that has been raised, the dollars that have been spent, the cost of the blood, sweat, and tear that have gone into creating these things. It just baffles me that we're not working together in a better way. Mama Shu is about ten years ahead of me on her development. She was working over there on Avalon Street before I started purchasing properties on West Wayne of Vista. I know how much I've spent. I can't imagine that she's not at least double or triple that amount. And, you know, it's a, a hard job that you guys have in fight and following the rules of the charter and those types of things. But it's an even harder job to ignore your community. So just wanted to bring those brief words to everybody.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else coming towards the podium, so city council, we are moving to our. I don't see anybody else coming towards the podium, so City Council, we are moving into our agenda. First item on the agenda is tabled item, item five, tabled from the August twenty first, twenty twenty three meeting. This if this agenda item is a resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at fifty five Avalon to the adjacent property owner at fifty one Avalon. City Council, what is your pleasure on item five?
Motion to bring back from the table.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Al Shafi to bring the table item back on the floor, seconded by Councilwoman Manica. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Minshaffey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mark.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes, item five is on the table right now. So council, at this time, I'm ready to turn the floor over to members of council. Each each member of council for discussion items will have a two up to ten minute period to discuss any item on the agenda. Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am, too. I'm a I'm a short man with a short neck and this is the long distance, so I'm trying to lean over here. Okay, so Mr. Al Shafi, I see your hand is up if you will, please.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor for Councilman Al Shafi, seconded by Councilwoman Manica. Okay, are we allowed to discuss at this point, council? So you know, the attorney is telling me that we need to have a motion for action. She's correct. We have we motion to approve. We have a motion to approve on the floor from Councilman Al Shafi. Do we have a second? Yep, now it's on the floor. Mr. Al Shafi has just made a motion to approve the sale. Do we have support?
I supported it, remember.
You supported to remove it from the table. Are you supporting the sale as well?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. The resolution to sell the vacant residential lot at fifty five Avalon to the adjacent property owner. Mr. Al Shafi has made a motion on the floor to approve the resolution. Do we have support?
I second.
We have second from Council Proton. The item is on the floor. Mr. Al Shafi?
Council President.
Yes, sir.
As I look into this, oh, did God have mercy. Oh, what a city, what a city you guys are, just an amazing, complicated city. As I look into this matter and I keep digging, it just gets worse. It doesn't get better. It just gets worse. You make your own case. In most instances, you've been on this property for six years. Why didn't you purchase this property? Why go six years without purchasing it? Why do that? Who invests this kind of time, money, and energy into something without purchasing it? E- e- exactly my point. Well, I I I I get that. I've dug into all of this and this is a hot mess from the jump. This is a hot mess. Either way, go, you're not going to be happy, they're not going to be happy. You 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 all want to hate our guts. And I'm gonna make you a promise. This council member will never set foot on Avalon Village again. Never. I'm done. Because this is the most ugliest, most disgusting display of a single lot. You have an entire block. This is one lot. One lot. There are six parcels left on the full street of Avalon between Redwood and Second. Two are owned by the city and the other five are owned by residents. The rest of the entire block on both sides of the street is owned by Avalon Village. And I'm still wondering, I'm still racking my brains as to how this came about without a development plan. That's the kicker right there for me. That's the kicker right there for me, because this is something that would never have been allowed for me to do. Whoever did this favor, whoever helped motivate and move forward this favor from the previous administration, I'm not calling no names. I'm not making no judgments. Whoever did this, they left a hot plate of crap sitting on this table. And now you want us to deal with it. You want us to favor as opposed to following the rules. This is a favor. If we're following the rules, if we following the rules, whoever had the application in first is the one that gets the lot. If we're following the rules, so you're asking us not to follow the rules. And said, now what you just stood up here and asked me? The rules are whoever application came in first gets the lot. His application's been in queue for six years. Shu's been in queue for less than a year. Explain that one to me. Help me understand that. And I love you. I love you. I do. I love what Avalon Village has done. I love what it stands for. I love the way it looks. I love everything about it. But you're asking me for a favor and you know how I hate favors. I hate favors. You're asking me to give you a favor instead of following the rules. So what's the crossroad here? I asked you that two weeks ago. What's the crossroad? Where's the middle ground? What do you want from us? Where's the middle ground? I see the lawsuit flying. I don't care what you say. I see it. It's as clear as day. And I'm not giving the person another dime, not while I'm sitting here. I don't care whose shoes, you know, you're winning thing out of me. I'll fight it to the death. So I so so tell me what the middle ground is. What do we stand here? What's the outcome here of a one lot, one funky lot? Help me understand that. Well, you have an entire block at your disposal.
We have other we have other members that want to make a comment.
Ms. Martin had a
Go ahead, Council President.
Now, Ms. Martin, you have a comment you want to make?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Mama Shu and Mr. Lopez. I wish you guys had brought pictures, but that's okay. First question, Mama Shu, do you pay taxes on those those lots that you have? You pay taxes?
I don't. Yeah, at this point, we
Yes.
We, huh? Huh?
You said forty plus? Okay. Okay, thank you for that. And then my question to you, Mr. Lopez, is you said something about you were looking at pictures all the way from California, correct?
When we go to purchase a lot or a house, all you see is
So what do you remember those pictures looking like when you purchased? But the lot that we're talking about, you never saw a picture of the lot? You didn't?
We purchased the house, then once we saw the lot.
Correct.
Well, limit, yeah, Mr. Lopez, we allow very limited discourse.
Yeah, because I I do have another question.
So, everybody can hear me? Yes. So what we do is we, first of all, I want to say something.
Just let's keep it
I love what Mama Shu's doing.
I want you to make sure you do we one favor, right? So we can stay up and please answer her question.
So we look at pictures from Google and you see a listing for a lot, I mean a house. Once you buy that house, you know, if win it, wait on this stuff. Once we bought the house in two thousand and seventeen, from a picture in Google in front of us, you see, you don't see anything around it. You go back, went back to the city and applied for the lots. And the reason we did that is that this house is it's particularly special. It has a very, very large garage in back, which leaves no space at all for anyone to have an outdoor living environment.
Speak a little louder, please.
Okay, so this this house has a very large double, it's two two car garages in back. It leaves no room in the back for tenants to enjoy an outdoor space. So for us to have this house be, you know, a nice place for a tenant or two, it's a duplex. You want to have that side lot so we can enjoy an outdoor space along with the house because of the back of that house is filled up with garage.
Okay, so that sounds like the purpose of why you want to purchase it. But my question is, do you remember what the picture of the lot looked like before you got it?
We never saw a picture of the lot. We only, okay, so you buy the house with a picture from Google.
Is that a yes or a no?
There's no picture of lot.
So that's a no?
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much, sir. Ms. Manica, you had a question as well?
I I didn't have a question. I just had a statement. So because I believe I read it before, that you can always split the lot in half, one person get half, the other person get the other half. So this has been going on for what, three council meetings? I'm absolutely right that this is taking too long. Okay, in first first thing was for them to see if they could work it out. It did not work. Second thing was, we split it down. That wasn't working. We got tabled. My position hasn't changed. Has nothing to do with any of that. My position is that if you have this many properties, you need to be fixing them up. And if you haven't, then don't ask for anymore until they're off. I'm not I'm not asking a question. I'm giving my statement. That's all I'm doing. Okay, so that's my take on this. If you have not, and they've been here for a while, then you should have began. So the same scenario that my counterpart is saying, you've owned this house for this long. Why didn't you try at the same time to purchase the lot? I'm not asking a question. I'm making a statement. And so the same thing goes for Shu. Same question, purchase the lot. I do get it. I understand we had the moratorium, this and that, but since then, we've been selling lots now for months and months and months.
No, we haven't.
We haven't?
No, we haven't. We only just recently has a gridlock.
But we started. And so and at the time that we started, we could listen at the time that we started, that could have been done. I think that she's doing a wonderful thing. I think that a lot of things could have happened, did not happen. So we could, we can continue to go back and forth on what could have happened, didn't happen, may happen. Mr. Hinton, I don't know. I think they're saying there's no development plan. I believe there is a development plan for Avalon Village, but I'm not sure. Either way, I would suggest, just a suggestion, I would talk to CED or the mayor and actually just put infill house in there. Now, guess what? It belongs to the city. Somebody can purchase a home on that in on that lot and we still get paid. We get property tax, income tax, and somebody there that can also still enjoy Avalon Village. So that would be a perfect solution to me. Just make it an infill housing situation where whoever starts to develop in the city will infill house in those areas and put a house there. Other than that, we need to move forward on on the subject. Again, those were the choices. Those were the choices by law. My counterparts already know where my vote is. They need, they can make their decision. In the meantime, guys, I hear you, but I only heard one or two people from Highland Park. Everybody else in here predominantly lives somewhere else. They live somewhere else and they take their money where they go. I'm not saying, don't come here. I want you to come here. I'm just saying, guys, again, I said this last week. Nobody has come up here in front of us really saying, hey, take your time, figure this out, fix the ordinance so that we can come before you and we won't have these issues. When I talked to Mr. Hinton and said, hey, fix these things, CED, fix these things before the people come before us, it did not happen right away. And I don't know if it's still happening. Okay, but what I'm saying is, think about it. Be honest with yourself. Did you not one time say, hey, give them the opportunity to do what they need to do to make the books right? To make the ordinance or the charter right, because you continue to come up here and tell us what we didn't do, what we need to do, attack us about what we had nothing to do with. And then you again want us to do something because we all love what Mama Shu has done in that area. Absolutely right. But we cannot, unfortunately, guys, continue to just sell lots and not build a house at some point. Thank you.
Any more comments from council? Ms. Martin?
Yeah, you made a comment. You said forty homes refurbished, renting order, air conditioning, rent less than market value. Make sure each house is treated accordingly and haven't sold one house. So my next question is, raise your hand if you're anybody in the audience who rents from company P and P.
Where are those forty properties?
I mean, but you wouldn't want them to speak in your behalf?
I see you, Ms. Manica.
I have no more questions, President.
Thank you. Ms. Ms. Manica?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
I I just I I did want to ask a question. Thanks, Ms. Martin, for making me remember. Where are those forty properties that you mentioned? You didn't actually say they were in Highland Park. Are they all in Highland Park? Yes, I'm asking you. I'm just asking you to a- answer if they are in Highland Park.
The forty homes are in Highland Park.
Okay, thank you.
We are constantly
We can only get, thank you very much for your answer, sir. Okay, so we've had two, we've had two. The floor has been taken by at least three council members twice. Madam Proton, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
She she moved call for the
Okay, so prior to, so we've had all council members weigh in and prior to calling for the vote, the chair is going to offer his two cent. Everybody up here was voted for by citizens in the community, citizens in that live in Highland Park. That statement that you made, purchase sight unseen. Unfortunately, no, I'm just saying the statement that was made, purchased sight unseen, that happens a lot. There is a prodigious desire to purchase property in Highland Park and the local residents feel a certain type of anxiety and pressure because we realize Detroit is a hundred and forty square mile city. Born and raised in Detroit, I've been living in Highland Park for twenty three years. This small enclave is surrounded on all sides. And as developers approach our community, they don't engage us in most cases. They purchase property and they don't become a part of the community or the neighborhood. And so I understand the anxiety that people are talking about. And when I go to the gas station and when I go to the grocery store and when I'm walking my dog, we get input from citizens on what they think they want to happen, just like in Farmington, just like in West Bloomfield, just like in Huntington Woods, just like in in Livonia and those communities. People in the community decide what they want in their community. All of us are voted for. All of us are voted for by people in the community. So you need to understand that the motivation of some of these people in here are based on the votes and the comments that they get from the people who support them. Our job is to vote for our constituents. Bottom line. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Shafi.
Yes, to the sale.
Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Manica.
No.
Councilwoman Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President.
No. Motion fails. Next item, please. This is item five under the mayor's office. I'm sorry, item six. Item six, a the resolution for the designation and approval of the street administrator for Act Fifty One by the City of Highland Park Engineering Department. Motion to approve with discussion. We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Al Shafi to approve with discussion. Second from Councilwoman Manica, Engineering Department. Gentlemen, you are up. That would be Yes, sir.
Maybe.
Yes, sir. Mr. Garrett? Okay, we're all right. Mr. Garrett, we need you, please.
I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. Just trying to get off.
Okay.
Good evening.
Yes, if you would speak to this, I believe. Mr. Shav, did you have questions?
Uh, yes, I do have some questions. I'm a little bit concerned. Okay. Mr. Garrett is already extensively overtaxed. Uh, he oversees our water department. He oversees the engineering department and now he's going to oversee a department that is traditionally reserved for the DPW director and I'm trying to figure out where the hell is our DPW director? Why is this not in the hands of the DPW director? Why is it going to the engineer? I got a problem with this one here. Mr. Garrett, if you would.
So, uh, good evening, uh, council and residents. So I have a staff. I have over sixteen people working in Highland Park. I am not running. I'm responsible for all of those departments, but I'm not personally doing the work in all of those departments. As far as DPW representatives, if you, and I know Councilman Shafi, you've seen the charter. Um, they that it states to having a registered licensed engineer running the department. And there's been many discussions at this council about use of Act Fifty One funds is not being spent on this. It should be spending spent on that. So what we're trying to do is assist the DPW department and be able to provide our professional expertise to resolve matters in the city, whether it's maintenance of roads, fixing potholes. And this designation gives me the authority to sign documents and go secure additional money for the city.
Um, s- speaking of Act Act Fifty One funds, where are we with those funds? What's currently in that account?
I don't have I I do not have the Act Fifty One uh account in front of me.
Can the mayor give me answer to that? I'm pretty sure she knows. Okay, is there anybody from finance on the on on the call or or is that Or, or is that going to be an answer that I'm not just going to get? What's in the Act Fifty-One funds? What is in it? Why have we not been kept the breast of it? Why have we not been given a detailed informational sheet as to what's been going on with it? Why is this like a mystery in the city of Highland Park? Somebody explain that to me. Why is it a mystery? Why is everything in this city a freaking mystery?
Ms. Square, would you know who is responsible for administering that fund? Finance Department. I don't see anyone from, um, Ms. Eleanor was on early, but I don't see her here now.
And you probably have a balance in the monthly reports. There's a monthly report on this agenda, but certainly councilman, um, that information will be provided to you.
I appreciate that, Ms. Square. Okay. In the meantime, I withdraw my approval.
Your support?
Yes.
So the motion is off the floor. So we have item six, resolution for the designation and approval of a street minister for Act Fifty-One by the City of Highland Park Engineering Department. The floor is open. Do we have a motion?
I'll tell you, until I get more information, Council President, I withdraw.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Manica?
I move to support to approve resolution for designation and approval of street administrator for Act Fifty-One by the City of Highland Park Engineering Department.
Do we have support? The chair offers support. Any further discussion on item six A?
I did want to just say something. We talked about, um, I think last meeting, the street and, and different things that the engineering department does. They have been working in that capacity. I do understand the issue of finding out the information for Act Fifty-One. I do think it's in our, um, report that we receive. But the engineering department has been doing, um, most of this work in regards to that type of things that D P W would do, even when we had a D P W director. So I, I just think that we need to move forward with this.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ashafi?
Um, uh, in response to, to Councilwoman Manica, I totally agree with her. But the problem is, is we're steadily moving forward, but we're not correcting the deficiencies in our operation. There are deficiencies, information is being kept from this council. We are not being the best of anything. Everything is a big freaking secret around this city, you know? And I'm tired of it. I'm, I'm, my patience is running out. Here we are eight months in and it's still the same foolishness. No information, no thorough details, no nothing. But you want me to make a vote on something at the last hour of thirty minutes? I find that interesting. If you want me to vote and you want me to give you the necessary support, then give me the information that is required. I'm tired of asking for the same thing over and over and getting no response, getting the runaround from the mayor and her administrations about what's going on in this city. Enough is enough.
Yes, ma'am, I hear you.
We are, we are the fiduciaries of this city. The mayor handles the administrations, we handle the fiduciary side of the city. It is our responsibility to sign off for everything that goes wrong in this city. And when something goes wrong, they're not looking at the mayor, they're looking at us. We're the idiots in charge here. We're the ones they blame. She gets the pass. And I'm tired of the games of not giving the information that needs to be given to this council for us to make an informed decision. Enough is enough. It's been eight months. Enough is enough.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am, just one second. On August twenty-third, at one fifty-two P M, we received a document and email from Ms. Square. It is specifically related to. Can you hear me? Yes, on August twenty-third at one fifty-two P M, following our meeting, we received a document from Ms. Square and it gives the full account of Act Fifty-One. The email is titled Section thirteen-nine of Act Fifty-One of nineteen fifty-one. It gives a full explanation that was provided to us by the city administrator as it related to Act Fifty-One. And Ms. Square has also provided us with detailed explanations on numerous occasions as to how the process is supposed to work with respect to the administrator of the funds. Madam Mayor, you had a comment you wanted to make before we call for a vote on item A?
Uh, as it relates to not receiving the information as it relates to Act Fifty-One, every month you receive a document that tells you what has been expended, what is left. And so we have been providing that since day one.
That document reads like sterile instructions, Madam Mayor.
I'm, 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 my turn.
Let her, let her make her comment and we'll move on to vote.
I'm, I listen to you now, can you listen? Um, so those documents is the requirement from the city. The finance department is required to give the council a, a, uh, uh, a document that breaks down everything that was expended, that was sent out. And that's what we have provided. That is the requirement. What Councilman Ashafi is asking for is an extra requirement that he wants. We are fulfilling the needs of the requirement. The requirement is just that, that we send out a monthly statement. And that monthly statement breaks down everything. Now, as far as who is, who is, you keep asking about a D P W director? Well, the charter calls for the director to have a, one, a engineer's license. It's a requirement. And we're talking about requirements. You just spoke about that before, the law requirements. Requirements are just that I am talking about. I, I am talking. I am talking.
Try to maintain some decorum here, please.
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to have my, my turn without being interrupted. The requirement is a, a engineer's license. We have tried to hire people twice. No one will accept what we're offering. So the, uh, Act Fifty-One's money, uh, for the street administrator requires that I appoint a street administrator. It doesn't say it has to be the D P W director. We've been through this over and over again. There's nothing in there that says it has to be the D P W director. I am appointing and asking for this council to approve the street appointment for Damon Garrett because this application is due and in, in the next week or two. If we do not send in an application for a street administrator, we are going to risk the possibility, it's a possibility of not being able to draw down our Act Fifty-One's money. And so that's all I have to say. You can decide what you want, vote up, vote down, it, it's up to you. But when the streets are not repaired or we don't get the money or we don't get the things that we need, although we are following the rules, which there's, um, to a point. And that, that's okay, that's, that's not okay with me, but obviously it's okay with you. Thank you. Have a great.
Okay, do we have any other, we have any other questions from council? If not, I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Council President?
Uh, Mr. Ashafi, is this your second or your third?
Uh, this is my second.
Okay.
Okay, um, I, I'm going to find it because I just read it yesterday in the charter in chapter seven. It said the street administrator will be the, will be the D P W director right here in the charter. So that was outright lie right there.
Well, the charter, the charter does not, so, so Act Fifty-One.
I'm gonna find it, don't worry about it, I'm gonna find it.
Listen, this is from the Michigan legislature.
Don't worry about it, I'm gonna find it in the charter.
Okay.
Okay, I understand, I, I, I understand about the, the Michigan, uh, legislature. But we are, we are obligated to follow our charter as well.
Okay, so there's.
Okay, the rules have to apply.
I understand home rule, but the Michigan legislature sends us the funds. And it says in, in section nine, in each city and village to which money is returned under this section, a responsibility for street preservation and a, and a development and construction or repair of all street parking facilities, construction or repair of street lighting shall be coordinated by a single administrator designated by the governing body.
And who is the governing body? Is that the mayor or us?
That she is the administrator, but she's the chief executive officer of the city and we're the legislative.
It said the governing body. We are the governing body.
Who shall be responsible for and shall represent the municipality and transaction with the department under the.
Double word meaning, I hate double words.
Okay, so let's go. So if we don't have any other, uh, questions, uh, Ms. Martin, Madam Proton, anything to add here?
I'm gonna find that.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Madam, uh, Clerk, would you please call the roll on item six A, the resolution for the designation, designation and approval of the street administrator for Act Fifty-One by the City of Highland Park Engineering Department? If you will call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
Hell, no.
Councilwoman Monica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Tom.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, on, under item six under the mayor, this is a resolution to reappoint Greg Y. Eugene Lewis, Leslie Robinson, Derrick Brown, Casey Jackson to the Tax Increment Finance Authority. Counsel, how would you like to proceed on item B?
I think everyone knows the people that are on his list.
Okay.
I think.
So Ms. Manica, is that you saying you want to make a motion to approve?
I'm going to, I'm sorry. I move to approve the resolution to reappoint.
Support with questions?
Um, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica. It's been supported by Councilwoman Ashafi with questions, Mr. Ashafi?
Okay, so, um, Council President, I want to bring back Ms. Washington's question. She asked the question, do we have to take the people that are on here in case some of these people are undesired by the public? Do we have to take them as a whole or can we break them up and make amendments?
Okay, so what I don't know, I'll tell you what I don't know first. Here's what I don't know. I don't know what happens if we don't approve this Tifa board today. So hold on a second, let me tell you what I don't know. I don't know why it would be an issue. These are the, these are the current members, am I correct? And these are the sitting members? These are the sitting members on the Tifa board, Greg Y., am I correct? These are the sitting members and these members have been sitting for more than a year. They have been, they've transitioned over from the previous administration. So they bring with them experience, correct? Okay. I don't know what happens if we don't have a Tifa board. I don't know what it would be like to have a Tifa board during these developments with no experience. I don't know what that looks like. What I do know is we have an agenda item here. These people have been vetted. They have been interviewed. They are obviously competent and qualified to be in their roles.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Can the attorney give me a legal opinion, you know, she, she is.
Miss Burton, would you please?
If she can give me a legal opinion on that question.
You can vote on them individually if that's council's preference.
Okay. Okay, so we can vote them individually if that's council preference.
So that would have to be a completely separate motion.
So, 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 Counsel, I'm, I'm asking the question. I haven't seen a Tifa meeting in two years. I haven't seen a Tifa meeting in two years. I haven't seen a notice or posting. I haven't seen diddly squat from Tifa in two years. So where have they been for the two years?
Okay, and that may be as, as you know about our boards and commissions. Some of our boards and commissions are hybrid or dormant until an activity is required. There has not been any major development other than the Ask the Capital group there. But before we do that, members, we have the chairman. You are the chairman, correct?
I understand the chairman is here, I heard you the first time on that. So I'm just, I'm curious.
Would you like to have him entertain your question?
I'm curious, and then there, then there's so much of the bylaws here that have been scratched out. Okay, as if, as if somebody, uh, before they printed this, decided to scratch out a whole bunch of stuff before they made a copy of it and gave it to us. So all this is.
Your attorney is telling me that we inherited this on January second.
I understand that we inherited it, it doesn't mean we have to keep it.
So, so we're not, we're not in a position right now to rewrite the Tifa within thirty days of meeting the Tifa. We're not in a position to cert, to flip the table and circumvent the process while we have Tax Increment Finance Authority activity and Brownfield Authority that's coming through the city. We're not in a position to flip the table until the Chargers, Greenway, Ask the Capital. We're not, we're just not.
You, Council President, I will draw my support.
Okay.
No way in hell.
So for item B, reappointment, um, the members are listed. Greg Y., Eugene Lewis, Leslie Robinson, Derrick Brown, Casey Jackson. Uh, Ms. Manica, do you still have your support out there for that?
I, I don't have a support, I still have my.
You made your motion.
My motion. But he had questions and I wanted to actually respond or not respond to him, but to say something.
Okay, so do we have support for this item? Do we have support for the approval from other members?
Support.
We have support for Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Manica, the floor is yours.
First question is, I, I noticed that we reappointing four and then we're going to appoint two. So therefore there's six on Tifa? I'm asking that question, it has to be six.
Louis, would you mind? No, we want the chair.
Just how many members?
And why is that split up?
Okay, hold on, hold on.
You had a question, go ahead, Ms. Manica.
Oh my God, y'all doing the most crazy thing.
How many members? I'm sorry.
Reappointment and appointment is different. Go ahead, please.
So currently we have four members. Um, and because of that, for the last year and a half, we weren't able to have a, a meeting because we didn't have a forum.
So again, there's six members on the Tifa board. There should be.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking, there should be six.
And Mr. Hinton is on seven.
Make seven, right?
Okay.
Okay, and so we are reappointing those four because they're there. And the reason why they're separate is because we need to add two more to that. So that's why they're separate. I think you had a, a question or you wanted to respond to why you hadn't done anything.
But, um, like, like we said before, if there's nothing on the agenda, we tend not to have a meeting. Um, and then probably about a year and a half ago, we lost two of our members. Uh, we had a, a real estate attorney who was on the board and he moved to Miami. And then we had an accountant on the board that we, we picked to help us with our finances and stuff like that. And, um, she moved away also. So we're trying to re, so we needed more members to move forward, the further business of the Tifa and, and Brownsville.
So you couldn't legally operate, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Manica, forgive my.
No, that's okay. You, you, he kind of answered it. I was wondering, so you could not do anything because of that? But once you have that, who governs? So this may be, is a different question for someone else. Who, don't go anywhere now. Who governs Tifa board? The city does.
Yes.
Not city council, but the city. He's going to ask that question.
Tifa is a component of the city.
Right.
So they have to come, they can't just arbitrarily approve something. They, they go, just like planning permission, it goes to Tifa. Once they approve it, it comes back to the city.
Okay. I, I think this may be the last question.
Go ahead.
I don't want you to tell us what they are if you do, but do you have any thoughts or kind of plans or things out there that you think you may want to bring to planning in that process? If I said that correctly, in that process?
Currently, we, we don't have anything on the agenda that we want to, uh, move forward at the very moment.
Okay.
But I know that, uh, there are several developments that we've had meetings with Mr. Hinton. So there is a, a redevelopment of a property on Woolworth and Sears that, that wants to be redeveloped, redeveloped. And then there is also a, a group that's interested in doing a mixed or a multifamily development for, for ownership on Glendale and Second. And, um, you know, and any day someone might want to do a Brownsville. Um, but we haven't had one. Uh, we, we, we've here, we've had some conversations with people.
I see your hand, Mr. Shaf.
Anything going for, yeah.
So, Mr., just, just, I'm going to pass the floor to Mr. Shaf in a second. What you just said is Brownfield um, redevelopment is a trigger, right? That is a trigger that gets you active. So is it Brownfield Authority?
This is not Brownfield.
Okay. Just tax.
It's the same members, but let's not merge them.
Okay, I just want to clarify, I was getting a little confused. Mr. Ashafi, you had a comment?
Yeah, yeah, um, I got, I, 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 I got a big, a big elephant in the room. If you were short of members, we've been here eight months. Why wasn't this taken care of at the start of the year? Why wait to eight months now? You know what I'm saying? I feel like there's something that's coming I feel like there's something that's coming that we're uh about to have a finger, a finger stuck in our ear on a really that nobody wants to tell us about. You know what I'm saying? I I find it convenient that after eight months now, you want to put the Tifa together. I'm curious as to why it wasn't done at the start of the year.
Well, so when you, when you pick a Tifa board, you want to make sure that you 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 have the right people on the board. Um, but even if we, when we do something, um, we still have to bring it to the body of the council.
Okay. So that. How long, sir? Quick question. How long have you been without these two members? Give me an exact, exact time.
About a year.
About a year.
Like a year and a half, yes.
A year and a half. Of of missing two board members and y'all only think that that was important enough to 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 try to solve before you came to us?
Well, you, we had a a previous mayor and so we wanted to wait and let the new mayor pick the uh more, the second two members that we needed.
A year and a half.
But you also understand that we didn't have any, any agendas that, anything on agenda that was pressing that we need to move forward at the time.
Does that year and a half include the eight months that we've been sitting here?
Yes.
Okay, so minus the eight months that we've been sitting here, how long have the members been missing?
So you just minus.
Yeah.
So you take, you take a year and a half, so that's twelve plus another six, then you minus the eight, that's what you'll get.
Okay, so that's quite a long time to not have the members, no meetings, no concerns. The Tifa is very important to the city. It's a major development revenue, especially for the downtown area. I can't see why it was allowed to sit and languish for so long. There are plenty of things to do. I understand that you said that y'all didn't have any men, nature had nothing. Well, that's because that's because nobody could reach you. You are unavailable, no board.
I wouldn't say that we were unavailable. We we've we've had held meetings several.
I have, I have developers who call my phone on a daily basis. They beating down the door to try to get into Highland Park. None of them are being seen. Hold on a second. None of them are being seen. None of them are being talked to. Let's take a man that's sitting in here right now. Mr. Mr. Harvey did it, sitting right there. How you doing there, Mr. Harvey? Yeah, okay.
So, um.
He's, his development is actually in the Tifa district.
So.
Why isn't that on this table and being considered by you?
Something, I I know Harvey very well, so I don't think.
We didn't approve his development, remember?
It was supposed to come back to us and never came back to us, Council President. It disappeared.
I think you misunderstand what the Tifa does.
It's before the plan.
It's before the Plan Commission right now? What about uh uh Mr. Um, what's his name? Uh, Alden Williams. Some major development that was supposed to be in my district, it just, it disappeared.
We're, we're.
Okay, so hold on a second. Let's stay on, let's stay on course here. The the item on the floor is the resolution to reappoint. This is not, this is not um an opportunity to take the gentleman apart.
Oh, no, no, no.
Questions about, and he's tried to explain it to us and I, as somebody who slightly understands the development process, it takes some time.
So we, when you have a, when a person has a development.
You want to say less.
Okay.
Say less. Ms. Manica, you have something that you wanted to say? Do we have any?
I did. I lost it. We got lost a few seconds ago, but I think that it's a better way to get things done. And yes, things have been taking a long time, Mr. Shafi, but they are here at this point. And at some point, we have to begin and start. So we cannot have a conversation. I don't know how this happens every time that we suppose, we don't, we're city council. We're talking amongst ourselves or to the person that's at the podium. No offense to anyone out there, but I don't know if we should be having conversations with the audience while we're trying to discuss something. So I think that's kind of rude, but I am saying to you, and I was trying to explain, that we got to move forward. They are here right now. They want to get started and we need to get started at some point, whether it was eight months, ten months, two months. We have got to begin and hollering and being mad at them is not going.
I didn't holler and I wasn't mad.
Okay, it sounds really loud.
You you know, when I speak, I speak passionately.
Let's let Ms. Manica have a floor.
Okay, I don't appreciate the assumption.
Okay.
So my assumption is what I hear, and I will say again that it, okay, fine, you wasn't hollering, but at this point we just need to get this going and to get started and go and start from this point. We can't do anything about some of the stuff that has happened and definitely has happened not under our watch. So right now, the Tifa is before us because believe me, there are going to be some other commissions and some other things that's going to come before us that didn't happen at the beginning. We had a lot of things going on in that very first eight months. Let's keep that real. We had a lot of things going on. We are finally to a point that we even can have these discussions. So I just think that we need to move forward and put whoever we're going to put on this Tifa board and move forward.
Thank you, ma'am. So no, we've had two interjections, Mr. Al Shafi.
No, 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 you said three interjections.
I asked you two or three.
All I want to know is, all I want to know very simply is, is what the requirements is to be on the Tifa board.
Call the roll.
Hell no.
All the cussing has gotten to stop.
Excuse me.
Hell, you're not a cuss boy. If it's in your Bible, you're not a cuss boy. So my.
I'm sorry.
She said it. Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proton Robinson.
I choked on my ass.
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item six, under the mayor's office, resolution to appoint Trevor Slaughter, Christopher Woodard to the Tax Increment Finance Authority. City Council, what is your pleasure on item C?
Douchebag. Sitting here, oh, yes.
This is six C, resolution to appoint Trevor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will make a resolution to appoint Trevor.
Make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion.
I love how you walk in the through that, Council President.
Um, doing my job like I do every day.
Holding her hand, but you better hold ours.
So again, I'd like to make a motion for the resolution to appoint Trevor Salter, I believe is how it's pronounced, and Christopher Woodard to the Tax Increment Financial Authority Tifa Board.
Do we have a second? Chair offers a second. Questions on item C. This is the resolution to appoint Trevor Slater and Christopher Woodard to the Tax Increment Finance Authority Board. Madam clerk, would you call the roll on item C, please?
Councilwoman Shafi.
I'm not a better than this.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proton Robinson.
No.
Council President.
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Item six, under the mayor, resolution to reappoint Ryan Johnson, Erica George, Michael Curris, Brenda Hicks and RJ Watkins to the Board of Police and Fire Commission. City Council, what is your pleasure on this item?
Motion to approve with discussion.
We have a motion to approve on the floor from Councilwoman Shafi with questions. Do we have support?
I will support.
We have support from Councilwoman Manica. Mr. Shafi, the floor is yours.
Is the board here? Is any member here?
Some of the members are here.
How they at? Michael Wallace. Who's the others?
We have a member online and some members might not be able to be here for a number of reasons.
Brian Johnson is online.
Mr. Johnson is online. Mr. Curris is present. Ms. Hicks.
Ms. Erica George is the uh the secretary, right?
Yep, Ms. George is present as well.
Okay, okay. How you doing, Ms. George? It's nice to hear from you and see you.
Great, you too.
Okay, I got no problems with you, Ms. George. You're good to go. Uh, my concern is with everybody else, okay? I need a a clear explanation from this board. And Mr. Johnson has been on this board for quite some time. I know back in two thousand and twelve, he was on this board when I was campaigning then. I want to know why our police department, with the exception of few officers, is in such chaos and disarray.
Mr. Shafi, this, our item D is a resolution to reappoint Ryan Johnson.
I understand that, but they're asking us.
Answer those questions though.
Okay, all I'm saying is, Council President, they're asking us to reappoint them to a very important board in this city. I want to know what they're going to do to improve the relationships between Highland Park Police and Highland Park residents, which at the moment happens to be very crappy.
So this is the, this is the review board for the Police and Fire Commission. There's the fire chief and there's the police chief. Those might be the people that ask that question.
So we're not going to ask this board any questions, huh?
This is their board of review. The chief of police and the fire department chief run the fire department and the police department.
So they're board of review? Okay, so how's their review going? Have we put anything uh in place to in ensure the safety of residents? Has the, has, has this board uh been active in making sure that officers obey the law and not run amok? Silence there.
Council President, is Mr. Uh, Mr. Curris there?
Mr. Curris? Would you like to address those questions? I know this is out of your wheelhouse and that's not your job, but.
Yes, thank you, uh, Council President. It is way out of my wheelhouse, but um, we meet uh every month.
I watch your meetings.
Either in person or online. And they are open to the public. They're, they're publicizing the city uh website and they are open to the public, for any member of the public to come call in to answer questions. We're there for the public. That is our reason for being there.
The only, the, thank you very much, because I watched some of your meetings. The only commission that that outshined you is uh historic commission. You guys do a very good job, but it's hard to beat the historic commission. They are super thorough. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Um, wh- when are you guys, since you chose to stand up and speak, uh, I'll tell you, when are you guys going to follow the Open Meetings Act and get you the highest offer Zoom to get back into this chamber? And meet in public?
I don't know.
I'm tired of going on Zoom. I can't get through. I can't make a comment. It's always a problem. It's always a technical issue. We meet in person. Why doesn't this board meet in person?
It's not up to me to call that, but I agree with you.
They're not required to either.
They are required to.
They're not.
They are required by the Open Meeting Act by law to meet in both, both virtual and public, just like we are.
Council President, um, I'm the chair. Council President, this is Mr. Johnson. I'm the chairperson of the committee. We are not required to meet in in public. However, we are going to start meeting back in public. Um, our meeting, our meetings have been in in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. I make sure that every meeting, if there's a cancellation, is posted on the city website. We meet every month, the first Wednesday of the month. We have open comments for the public. We follow the Open Meetings Act every meeting and we have been since I've been chair since two thousand and thirteen when I was appointed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Do we have any other questions for members? Otherwise, I'll call for the vote on item D. Motion is on the floor by Councilwoman Shafi with questions that were answered. Councilwoman Manica supported it. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Council President, I withdraw my support.
So the support has been withdrawn so far. The resolution to reappoint Ryan Johnson, Erica George.
Yeah, y'all walking on, I'm not.
Hicks and RJ Watkins for the board of commission. Ms. Manica, you are still out there supporting. Will you like to take over that motion?
My motion stands as I like to make a motion. I'm sorry. I move to approve the resolution to reappoint.
You reappoint uh Ryan Johnson, Erica George, Michael Curris.
I'm not walking in on.
Right.
Do you have any support for that? We have support?
Support. I wanted to add an amendment.
I'm sorry.
I want to add just a slight addition where it says police department and fire department, that first paragraph.
For board, okay, we're talking about on the actual resolution?
Yes, on the actual resolution.
Excuse me for a second.
I just want to add the word fire or two words, fire department.
Can we, um, Ms. Burden, can you get that taken care of? All right, thank you very much. Okay, so Madam clerk, would you please call the roll? The correction was fire department. It is on police and fire department.
Where it says the operation of the police and fire department.
I love how y'all making amendments in the middle of the vote. I should remember that. The next time we ask to make an amendment. I love how y'all making amendments in the middle of the vote.
So I, I.
Take it as is. Go ahead, Ms. Manica, would you please?
Rules are rules. You can't have it both ways.
Police and fire commissioners responsible.
Can't have it both ways.
Board is obligated to follow state law, whereas board of commissioners supports the board.
You see it? There is no vote on the table. I'm making my motion because he was through to support.
Yeah.
So my new motion
Yes, ma'am.
is I move to approve the resolution to reappoint Ryan Johnson, Erica George, Michael Curris, Brenda Hicks and RJ Watkins to the Board of Police and Fire Commissions with the amendment adding the addition and fire department. In the first paragraph, at the very end, it says the operation of the police and should say and fire department.
Thank you very much. Thank you for reading that book, too. Okay, motions on the floor. Councilwoman Manica is supported by Councilwoman Martin. Madam clerk, would you call the the roll for item D?
Council President.
You have.
Council President, y'all have multiple outside residents here. Or the charter only calls for one outside resident.
Could you go ahead and call the roll on item D, please?
The charter only calls for one outside resident.
Councilwoman Shafi.
No, hell no.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Yes.
Proton Robinson.
No.
Council President.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item seven, Department of Community Development. This is the resolution to sell at one oh six, one one five, one three five, one three seven, one four five, one four eight, one five one, one five nine, one six one, one six two, one six five, one six six, one six seven, and one six nine, Buena Vista to the north in Woolworth Community Coalition. That is N E W C C. City Council, how are we acting on item seven?
So I think there's um, I want to make a motion, but I think there's an amendment in there, right? Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure I read it correctly.
Consult, yeah, it was a correction of the language for the resolution.
Okay.
That is.
I move to approve the resolution to sell the vacant residential lots at one oh six, you want me to one fifteen, one thirty-five, one thirty-seven, one forty-five, one forty-eight, one fifty-one, one fifty-seven, one fifty-nine, one sixty-one, one sixty-two, one sixty-five, one sixty-six, one sixty-seven, and one sixty-nine, East Buena Vista to the north in Woolworth Community Coalition, New C C. With some discussion.
Okay, we have support for item seven. Chair offers support for item seven. It's on the floor.
So I I did have a few questions. So first, is there um, anyone here from New C C?
We have Reverend Ross on the line and we also have.
Good evening, Reverend Ross.
Good afternoon. Um, I am Sheila Starks Dudley. I am a lifelong Highland Parker. I know y'all been talking about Highland Parkers. Um, and I work for New C C. Our executive director is also online and able to answer any questions, Reverend Joan Ross. Um, we, you know, provided you with, you know, a lot of documentation. We are very active in Highland Park and doing a whole lot of great work for this community. So Commissioner Manica.
Yes, so if you want to just give us a brief overview and then I do have some questions.
Okay, Rev, you want to take that? We can't hear. I'm mute.
You just got to go a little louder. I heard you, but it's not loud. Now she's back on.
No.
Now she's back on me.
Yeah, so.
Can't hear.
Can you unmute her or she's not connected?
She's unmuted. Something's going on 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 her end with the microphone.
Um, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening to the council. I hope you can hear me. Um, I am not a Highland Park resident, but we have served the community of Highland Park for nearly twenty years. Uh, we very actively started serving Highland Park in twenty nineteen, prior to COVID. We currently serve over two hundred Highland Parkers with our Equitable Internet Initiative. We're also very active with all of, with several other organizations and functions in Highland Park. Uh, and I'm happy to answer questions about this development. We've been in housing with the Community Land Trust Model in Detroit since twenty sixteen. Uh, we currently have ten properties. All of our properties are occupied by residents who were in those homes prior to twenty fifteen. They went, underwent the huge tax foreclosure crisis in Detroit and our effort was to save those families and find a way that they could afford to buy ownership in homes. Um, and we have been successful in creating a model that currently has all single moms in it. Uh, they are all people who have income under fifty percent of the area median income. The Community Land Trust Model is used in over six hundred places around the world. Very heavily in the United States. There's over four hundred land trusts in the United States. Its mission is to provide home ownership for folks who are low to moderate income um and to stabilize those families and create generations.
um, and to stabilize those families and create generational wealth. Um, so I'll answer any questions that you have about the development.
Thank you. Questions additional?
So first, I know I looked at it. There's like, um, seventeen, I may, I mean, might be wrong. So just tell me, how many parcels would it be exactly? We have a total of fifteen parcels. Uh, we'll be creating thirty affordable homes for folks eighty percent and below area medium income. Okay, will those be brick or some other type of, what kind of construction are we looking at? Well, I can't tell you the construction style. At this point, we still have to work with an architect to do the design. I can tell you that we are a very greened organization. We do a lot of work in solar uh, and renewable energy. We'll make every effort to make those homes as efficient as possible and incorporate, if possible, um, a one megawatt or two megawatt mid-micro grid to sustain the community. So I I am in favor of this pro, of this, um, project. I do have a couple of questions. I'm not sure if they would be able to be answered right now, but so in that area, there's no housing. Well, there's some, but most of that property is empty. So you would need to do the sewer lines and sewer lines, service lines, water lines. Who's going to carry that burden and the cost? So currently, uh, site developments, site plans have not been worked out. Uh, we would be looking at perhaps brown fill credits and, uh, use of brown fill and things like that to help us do some of that work. Uh, at this point, I can't tell you how that breaks down and what kind of assistance we might have to come back to council and ask for. I can tell you that our goal is to make these affordable homes that we can create new generational wealth in Highland Park. We're not looking to gentrify the area. We're looking to support the families that have stuck and stayed in Highland Park, but who now may need to downsize or for the first time have an opportunity for homeownership. And there is a revi, uh, reversion clause. That's correct. Yes, ma'am. And so we're just approving your plans at this time. Well, that too, but we added the approval of, uh, the development agreement.
Development plan and the purchase agreement.
Um, some of my other questions you already answered. Um, maintaining a property will be done by New C C? Yes, ma'am. We've already started maintaining the property as best we could this summer. Thank you so much for that.
No further?
No, I was just gonna comment on that question that you just said. We, without the purchase of the land, we went in faith that we were gonna get this. We've been working with that community extensively for the last two years. Um, uh, doing food baskets and Thanksgiving and back to school support and taking care of all those properties since the beginning of the summer.
I think it's on the back. I'm not sure if everybody else's, but I do have that information on the back of mine.
Okay.
Okay. Additional questions? Ms. Martin, you have any? Madam Pro Tim? Okay, we'll call for the vote on item seven.
Please ask.
I ask you. Forgive me, sir, Ms. Al Shafi. Normally you put your hand up, so not seeing your hand means you typically don't have anything to say. The floor is yours.
We got, we got fourteen pieces of property at five hundred dollars. That comes to seven grand to the city. There's a lot missing from your application, a lot. Uh, you know, I, 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 I don't see the, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep my voice saying I have a tendency to be loud when I speak.
Thank you.
Um, I don't see a full development plan. I, I don't see where the funding is coming from. Uh, there are no sketches. There are no blueprints, no idea what the house is going to look like and if it's going to fit into, uh, into the decorum of the neighborhood. I understand what's in the packet. But you know, uh, the, a little bit more detailed would help me a lot.
Well, the reason, Councilman, um, that you don't see a whole lot of other things is because, you know, we learn lessons along the way. And, um, until we get site control.
Okay.
Expending all those funds is not.
Feasible.
Feasible.
Okay.
We've seen that when the development for the woodwork.
Mm-hmm.
The woodwork and they spent a million dollars or more with sketches and drawings and blueprints and all that kind of stuff. And then it got voted down.
Yeah, I've been waiting.
Right, okay, so, so we come with, um, um, the approved lawyer or lawyers. Development agreement and purchase agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
And now we move on to the next step. Okay, so we will bring back, you know, uh, I guess we have to come back and we start talking about what the Councilwoman Matt, Councilwoman Manica said and those kinds of things. But that's why the package is like.
Okay. Okay, that's fair enough. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, having, thank you very much, ma'am. Not having, hearing no more questions. We're gonna go ahead and call for the vote on this side of please. Item seven, under the Department of Community and Economic Development, this is the resol, resolution to sell the vacant lots on Buena Vista to the New C C Corporation. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for item seven?
Council President, I'll leave it to y'all. I abstain.
You can't abstain, so we have to vote. You can't.
Yeah.
Uh, um, go ahead.
Keep going, please.
Councilwoman Martin? Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
No.
Council President.
Yes, the vote is at a stalemate.
So what do we do at a stalemate? I, I don't have, do I have a book? Say one more time.
I have a book.
This is your government at work. You gonna check the book for the stalemate? He can't abstain. He has to vote no or yes. No. Us, you come on sidebar? With them? No. We, we have an open vote. It's voting going on right now. I know. You can't abstain. You have to vote when I'm staying. This is your government at work. This is your government at work.
Thank you. I know we're in the middle of vote. Can I make a?
She said it's coming back.
No.
Okay, so hold on here. Hold on a second. Robert's move might do that, but Robert's move might be the only.
I move to have a five minute recess.
So I'm going. Chair calls a five minute recess. This is, uh, forty four twelve. Where you at? Well, it says, I vote yes, and the chair votes the result. Hold it up or down and be done with it. Yep, forty four twelve. You got, you ready already? So let's come first. She's reading differently. I know, I know. So we had.
Yeah. You know, we break. And remake. So yes.
Table. So we have a vote on the floor. Hold on. All the meeting back to order. It is nine oh two P M. We have a tie vote on the floor. We had two members who voted in the affirmative, two, two members who voted against. And we have one member who is refusing to vote. We have two members who have voted in the affirmative, two members who have voted against, and we have one member who has refused to vote. And that takes, that records that as two, two. This item will likely be back. Because we, we didn't get an affirmative now. There are only five of us up here. So we'll keep it at the five that's up here. Not interested. Okay, so item seven is over. We're moving to citizens' participation.
Oh, excuse me.
Uh, no, thank you very much. No, not, we, we're moving to citizens' particip, participation. We're not going to discuss the items on the item.
Yes.
No.
Because it's supposed to die from lack of support.
So the, the item is dead. The item is dead. A tie means the item is dead.
It dies from lack of support.
Okay. The item is dead. Okay, it's a tie and therefore the item is dead at this meeting. All right, if then now, we're gonna move into citizens' participation. Any citizen that would like to speak? Any citizen that would like to speak, we'll hear citizens first. If you live in Highland Park, we'll hear from you first. You can queue up at the mic.
First of all, I think all of you know me and what. You don't know, when I lived here at the last time, I mean, I went into the hospital this day, I had a lot of time to think. My first time was, what are you gonna do with that lot there? It looks like I don't know what.
I didn't, I couldn't hear you, Ms. Washington, the what?
The lot that Ferris was on, Ferris wheel.
Oh.
It looks terrible.
I think that's private property now, if I'm not mistaken.
Is it?
It's my city owns. Somebody owns that.
Okay, well, we.
Yes, ma'am.
Your commissioner, who was just sitting there, Mr. Curtis.
Okay, we need to do something with it because of the eyes sore.
Yeah.
And secondly, I was sitting on my front porch yesterday with one of my neighbors and two coyotes just naturally ran down my driveway and crossed the street. How am I supposed to live like that? The girl next door is scared to walk a dog. It's terrible.
Hmm.
And I've been talking about these vacant houses all around me all this time. Nobody has come out and looked at them. Nobody has given me any direction to go into to get rid of these houses, and I'm not living with no coyotes. I mean, simply walked down my driveway and walked across the street. My porch light was on lighting up half the street. And I think that is very important. That is unsafe. My great grandbaby could have been out there playing with me. What you think they would have did to her if they just saw her out there playing on the sidewalk? She's only four years old. Something needs to be done about these wild animals running around Highland Park. Now, I don't know whose department it is. I don't even care. Just do something about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Washington. Any citizens that want to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Renee Port and I live on West Buena Vista. First, I've been coming to the meeting since we started back, and I've always asked about the mic situation. Is there any way we could improve these mics? Cause I'm sixty-three years old and I am getting hard of hearing, and I would like to hear what you guys are saying. We shouldn't have to strain to hear you. Second, when you guys get your package, from what I understand, you get them on Thursdays. Am I correct or a couple of days?
Most cases, yes.
So whenever you get them, you have time to review them. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if there's anything in there you have a question about, shouldn't you be inquiring beforehand so we don't have to spend five, six hours in these meetings? When I was on the Board of Directors for Wayne Metro, any questions we had, we wrote them down and then we went to the person we could ask them. It's okay to bring them to the citizen, but the question you guys are asking is not for us. You guys are per se squabbling among yourself. Third, Mr. Al Shafi. I say this every two weeks. This week I didn't have to because Ms. Al which did the job for me. This week I didn't have to, because Ms. Edwards did the job for me. I should not, as a citizen, you represent my district. My district has a lot of seniors that I speak to. And you always say, well, if you don't want me here, just let me know. You want me to be honest? You packed your bags today, do not come back. Because I should not have to go down them stairs with schools of peers if I need to bring you back up here to vote or something. You're representing my district, I know I have two minutes, but I'm going to go over. I am sick of this every two weeks, I go home with a headache every two weeks. You say no to everything. Do me a favor, and I know there are other people out there listening and sitting here that would like to see you gone. So if you don't want to be here, and you can't agree on something, when you leave tonight, don't come back.
Ms. Ford, real quick, so.
Sorry, during council affairs, during council affairs.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
This is, this is.
Every time, okay. Every time that we get something, it's always. Come forward, man.
Tonight, do me a favor, you can present that at council affair, I'm not going to walk out.
I don't need.
Okay, good girl, come on.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes ma'am.
Hi, I like to, hello, oh. Uh, my name is Jamil Edwards, I am a Highland Park resident, I live on Grand, East Grand. I want to address the grants for repairs for homes for seniors that they spoke about last meeting.
My hope, no.
It's the grants for to repair homes. And so when I went downstairs to apply for the grant, they told me that I didn't live on the street that it was approved by. But when it came to council, it didn't say that it had to have a certain street you live on. Now granted, I live on East Grand between Brush and Oakland. You know, majority of my neighbors are close to a hundred years old. They cannot afford to fix their homes up, but because it looks pleasingly aesthetic to the eye, you think that we don't need no help. I'm retired, and I am a senior, I just need some help.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright.
Good evening, council. Um, here I go with the saying, sung and danced. I've been trying to buy the vacant lot that's adjacent to my house since two thousand and sixteen. When I came down to the city building, they told me they could not find my application from two thousand and sixteen, so I resubmitted one for two thousand and eighteen. And luckily, I held on to this receipt, and I presented it to the front desk here at our building that I had, um, paid the deposit to purchase the lot. Here we are, you know, when I, even when I think about it, the lot that I bought that's directly adjacent to my lot, I bought from the land bank. The city of Highland Park has not sold me a lot. So I'm just asking, I would like to buy this lot. People, look, I'll be honest with you, I'm not building a farm, I'm not a farmer, I probably couldn't even grow a chia pet. I'm not trying to be a farmer, I want to fence it in to beautify my block. Because while y'all waiting on somebody to build a house there, I'm steady picking up debris, garbage, every week. I'm tired of it, I had to get, I had to pay somebody with a bobcat to come move the trash from back. I refuse to live in a jungle. Y'all can keep waiting and waiting for Superman, but you look around, only people that's going to save us is ourselves. Y'all got to realize that, I would love somebody to build a house next to my, next to my property, that'd make my property values go up, but I'm sick and tired of waiting. Wait, 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 wait. That word should be illegal in Highland Park, that's all we have done as a race of people, is just wait, wait, wait. You hear, you hear the word wait, it's not the right time, oh, be patient. That played out in the sixties. Man, we got to get our stuff together, I'm just, I'm asking for one measly lot.
Ms. McGee, what's the address?
The, the, um, lot I would like to buy is fifty-six Bear'sford. Fifty-six, I own sixty, but fifty-six Bear'sford, it's all I want to buy. And then what's so hard about that? I've been cutting that lot for twenty-three years since I moved to Highland Park. God, just help me, people.
Yes sir.
Thank you, you guys have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Um, good evening to these honorable body, my name is Marcellus Bryce. Uh, I would like to say that, um, I would have been here a lot sooner, but I've been in and out of town on business, it's hard to, you know, catch these meetings, and we have it twice a month. But, uh, my organization, um, Bryce Leadership, a Hope Foundation, in conjunction with the One Highland Park Community Organization, we did a bike giveaway on, uh, June twenty-eighth for the residents of Highland Park, and we gave away a hundred and eighty bikes, and we fed over two hundred families. And I just wanted to come by and give a special thanks. Uh, first and foremost, I want to recognize Councilwoman Khalia Martin, uh, Councilwoman, um, Charmaine Robinson, and Council, um, Member Prashida Shafi. I also see One Highland Park Vice President Jamil Edwards, I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart for, uh, coming out and helping us make this event a success. But I also want to give a special thanks, I was hoping the Chief of Police would be here, but I do see two Highland Park Police officers, and I believe they were in attendance. They came out in full force, they made sure that there was no accidents, they made sure that, uh, it was a great time. And so I just want to say thank you, uh, to the city, to the police department, to the council members, to One Highland Park. We greatly appreciate you, like I said, I would have came a lot sooner than had been for my travel, um, restrictions. But we just want to say thank you, let you know we're going to do it again. Next year, I'm pledging to give away three hundred bikes, and we're going to make it bigger and better. But I appreciate you guys, may God bless you, may heaven continue to smile, have a good night.
Hello, how y'all doing?
How are you, sir?
Hello, uh, I'm Marcel, again. Um, I was just overall going to say this ordinance, I'm glad that you all made quick results trying to initiate an ordinance, I was just going to say, um, I know this is a draft, but trying to make sure that you do allocate, because I'm not a Highland Park, but Detroiters do make sure you all get what you all are owed hypothetically, so at least twenty percent goes to Highland Parkers, because I know it'd be difficult trying to allocate a certain amount of licenses. Detroit Legacy Program did something similar to where they made sure returning citizens and people that stayed in the area got it. And I'm also asking for a thousand to two thousand dollars per year from these organizations possibly to go help with people with water or taxes. So in Alaska, they do oil, where residents of Alaska get some type of stipend from the oil sales. So Highland Park can probably be at the forefront of trying to make sure the cities where marijuana is at, is trying to re-insert that income into the community. CDAC is, again, is important, the Citizens Advisory Council, um, that hasn't been active, it's supposed to be twenty members, they're all supposed to be Highland Parkers, again. Um, no one's initiated that. Um, I feel like there should be some background checks when it comes to properties and developments. I would just made aware that it's no rule in place to where if I was an elected official, um, once I'm out of office, I can sell properties, or I can do contracts with people. Um, one of the things I want to say is the reason why I wasn't a resident, because then I did purchase a home from the county. It is no websites, you don't know what you're getting, you don't know the lots, you don't know the house. Um, I didn't get any grants again, et cetera, et cetera, but the whole thing is, um, that wasn't too many. But the whole thing is just trying to make sure that, um, it's some housing stock, because currently, again, if I want to move in, it's no public housing unless I go through a real estate agency. Yet, I'm seeing all these people getting homes consistently. Um, I'm wrapping it up, the charter, again, charter has no teeth. I'm confused, when I spoke to the Charter Commission, they said they made it in seventeen, it was revised in nineteen. Those two different governors, and it's two completely charters, I don't know what's going on. You all should be very concerned, because there's a lot of issues going on with that. Ethics Commission is very important, block clubs should be ran by the community. No city council, mayor, or any city administrator should be overseeing that. Block clubs can apply for nonprofits and other things to help revitalize outside of your authority.
And we owe it to, I let you go.
Oh no, I know you let me go, but the last thing I was going to say was resumes. One of the issues I have is make sure people have credentials, my resume, I've been hired as Highland Park as an intern since two thousand and seventeen. I was never terminated, and I was never given my hours, so it can show I have this internship. But the issue I have is an urban planner, I've sat here and saw multiple people come here and get a job, and they didn't even have experience, nor did they put in their time, so that's my conclusion. But the thing is, you have to hire some youth, and you have to get a fresh start, even if you hate people from other places, you cannot sustain this city with Highland Parkers, that's it.
And I thank you, I thank you. Drop, mic drop, official mic drop. Okay. Yes. Good evening, ma'am.
Ah, good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to say two things, briefly, I just want to say that, um, Mama Shu and Avalon Village, as well as Parker Village and Solidarity are visionaries. This is a visionary concept, where neighbors are working with neighbors. Uh, people are doing so much progressive work, that I just wanted to say that, you know, I really appreciate them. Now, um, the second thing I want to say is about our rally. October twelfth, eight o'clock in the morning, citizens in Highland Park are going to be headed for Lansing. Uh, we have a voice, and we want that voice to be heard. A lot of people that I talk to believe that it's only homeowners that this, uh, this, uh, I don't know what, Lev, you want to say about it, but all of this stuff about water, you know, the fact that, you know, a lot of people are thinking that we don't pay our water bills, and of course, that's not true. We know that fight, this fight is bigger than that. And we want to, we want them, and people to know that, um, businesses, as well as people who rent, you know, if, uh, you know, yeah, you may not get a water bill, but if, uh, you know, your landlord's going to go up on your rent. So, uh, this is just not about one group of people, this is about the community. We need everyone's support, and we need everyone, we have a hundred seats to fill. And, uh, we want people on those buses. We have people outside of Highland Park who have donated these buses. You know, we have, uh, groups who are giving us lunches, you know, we have people that are supporting us. So anyway, I'll wrap up, because I know I'm getting in close to my two minutes. But, um, you know, we have, uh, friends, and we have Highland Parkers, you know, old people like me and others, you know, we need young people, old people, business people, renters, we need everyone, you know, who has a conscience, you know, who are, you know, to be socially involved, I mean, you've got to step up sometimes, you know, you just got to step up. So, uh, we want everybody to come out, we want you to sign a call, either Janet.
Right here.
Okay, uh, area code three-one-three, three-three-three, zero-nine-nine-three, or call Charlene. Area code three-one-three, five-nine-five, three-five-six-zero. And, uh, get on the bus, or get in touch with me, I'm listed, call me, okay?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, City Council, uh, my name is Tammy Stafford, and I'm speaking in reference to a meeting, um, that we had with Soul Harvest Ministries in Highland Park. And, uh, we met with some pastors, and we collaborated also with, um, the Water Board and the School Board. And we were trying to, um, recruit other, um, collaborations to help us make Highland Park a better Highland Park. Like, some people, um, from the City Council, they want to, um, join us in a meeting. Some people, they know how to, uh, write grants in order to help us get money for the city, in order to like get, um, lighting, more lighting, more cameras, or whatever we need exactly for the city. And like I told, um, them at the last meeting, uh, we're a force together. Together, we're unbreakable, okay? So I want a lot of these committees in Highland Park, as well as this, as well as the City Council, to participate in order to, for everybody to bring their ideas together. Instead of just coming to a City Council meeting, um, speaking on things, and is never going further from there. I would like for us to just be, um, a collab. You know, so I'm tired of, um, other, um, communities, counties, and states saying, oh, soon as you say Highland Park, oh my God. You know, I don't want us to be a city like that. You know, I was thinking about if, um, we can collab even with the children, they having three hundred children now in, um, that's registered for barber school. Okay, in the summertime, those kids to have some type of job. I know they say that Highland Park is broke, but if we had a couple people that knew how to do grant writing, they can help us get out there in these, uh, fields, alleys, behind the schools, and clean up, just the little things that will help. And we want to also get somebody who has a plug in with the media. If we have more media attention, and, uh, we can do better with the city of Highland Park. Also, um, I would like to say about the, um, My Home Program. I spoke to this lovely young lady over the phone, and, uh, she got back with me like ASAP, thank you for that. But it didn't get like anywhere after you. Now, I did run into the mayor at the Soul Harvest meeting, but she was ill, so I do apologize for that, I did not bring it up to her. But when we talked to her secretary, it just like went nowhere.
And this is my least favorite part of the meeting, when you have three minutes, and I got to jump in and cut you off.
So I need help, so my mother can, okay, thank you so much.
Sorry, ma'am, ruse a ruse.
Good evening, I'm coming with some good news, um, seventy-five Avalon, in which we purchased for one dollar from, uh, the Wayne County Land Bank a couple of years ago, is going to be torn down, it's our last piece of blighted property on Avalon Street. Seventy-five Avalon, and it will be torn down on the nineteenth, we're very, very proud of that. Thus far, we've gotten three structures torn down with, uh, grant money from, uh, the Ford Foundation that I, um, allotted. Instead of basically paying us a salary or the folks, my people know that we're going to just take chunks of it and basically just help the blight. So, um, they will be tearing it down on the nineteenth, I'm very, very proud of that. I'm also very proud that we actually, um, brought in from the state of Michigan, we purchased that, uh, old gas station down there, and this was years ago, and they tore it down, and so basically, we're just basically bringing in resources also to help to, uh, combat, combat the blight. Uh, we also tore down one oh eight that was blighted as well, um, on Avalon Street. I'm just very happy to be able to, uh, you know, just be able to help to clean up the block in any way that we can, and I appreciate you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, have a good night. Okay, I don't see anybody else standing, so we will move into council affairs, Ms. Martin.
Council, Council President, there's people online, you forgot to ask about them, people online.
I closed my computer, I'm sorry, just a second. Mr. Lackey, could you pull them up for me?
Yeah, I got them on mute. You got a, a Don Morris and a Reverend Turner Johnson.
Alright. Uh, Ms. Turner Johnson, if you wouldn't mind.
Hello. Good evening, City Council Members, can you hear me?
Good evening.
I am online to support, and I was trying to do it earlier before you took the vote, but I was online to support the North End Woodward Community Coalition in their request to purchase the thirteen lots on east of Villavista. And the reason I am supporting them is because, number one, Highland Park needs new housing, we need new residents, we need a new tax base. We haven't had any new housing since the housing was built on Midland. And I've been involved in community development, housing development for, since the early eighties, and developing affordable housing, we have projects that we've done in Detroit. It's very complicated for a nonprofit organization to develop affordable housing. And so the first step is to acquire the land. And then once you acquire the land, you can go the next step to get the development plan, to get the development team to spend all the money that you need to spend in order to actually develop housing. So I, I hope that in the next go-round, the council will support the request of the North End Woodward Community Coalition to purchase those properties, so that we can get some new housing in Highland Park. I was excited to learn about their project, and many of you may know that I serve as. I was excited to learn about their project and many of you may know that I serve as the president, volunteer president of Base Incorporated Building Assets to Strengthen Society. So I don't have any direct involvement with the North End Woodward Community Coalition, but I just wanted to say that I support any nonprofit, nonprofit community development, nonprofit housing development. It's really needed in Highland Park and it's a way for us as a city to not only increase our tax base, but to support, uh, residents with affordable housing, which is so very, very important. So next go-round, please support their request. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Don Morris, I see you, chief. I'm gonna get you. You going, we gonna close this out. Mr. Morris? Do we have Mr. Morris unmuted?
He, he is, he is unmuted. She's just not talking.
Okay, then, chief, uh, Mr. Morris, I don't wanna pass you over, but I see that hand. Chief, would you go ahead?
Yeah, how, how's everyone doing? I wanted to congratulate the, uh, member, the new, uh, well, the existing members of the Police and Fire Commission. And, um, again, I don't know what I done to deserve, um, our police department getting attacked every week at these council meetings. I've, I've heard a lot of positive feedback in the community, but yet according to Councilman Ashafi, we're in disarray. And I think, uh, we've made some serious improvements in the department. And again, I'm not saying we're perfect by any means, but I'm gonna ask that the citizens and Mr. Ashafi and any other council members, if you have something that concerns you about the police department, please email me. Or if it's about me personally, please email me. Allow me to address it. Allow me to try and fix some of the problems. But don't hurt, don't attack all the men and women of the police department who are really busting their butts out there and doing some great things. I mean, we're, they're doing some positive things. They're saving lives out there. And a- and that's not just, you know, a blanket statement. That's a fact. So please, if, if there's some concerns you have with the police department, please email me, allow me to address them. If it's something we're doing wrong, give me an opportunity to fix it. But, you know, don't make blanket statements against the whole police department about being in disarray because there's people who come there and, and work hard and, and we should be commending them, not beating them up. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, Mr. Morris, this is the last call. We talking? I can hear you now, sir. Yep.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to address, I wanted to address Councilman Ashafi's last comment last, at the last meeting when he said Highland Park is comparable to battered women. And I think that is something obviously unprofessional. I think that is something, you know, out of his scope. But also, I live in Highland Park and I've been a private investigator for almost ten years. And it's crazy how you would concern Highland Park residents as a, you know, domestic violence women when he spent five years in prison for domestic violence. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Seeing no more comments from citizens, we're gonna move into council affairs. Ms. Martin?
Hello, everybody. Great evening. I just wanna say I'm happy for all of you that decided to stay here. Thank you so very much. I really truly appreciate that. Um, sometimes these meetings get really wild. I think that's the best way I can describe that. So thank you so very much for staying here. Um, with that being said, um, there are some wisdom that I do wanna drop to anybody that, you know, I realize, I heard the saying that relationships is the new currency, right? And it could be a relationship of, um, you know, inspired with projects or, you know, a movement or a mission or, you know, you name it. But one thing I realize being in this space, this place and the position that I am is I see the new currency not necessarily as relationships. But sitting here listening to what it is that you guys have to say to me is the new currency. So I am sitting here listening, being over here, over there with you guys. So I appreciate everything that you guys say. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Ms. Manic?
All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out this evening and staying. Can you hear me? Okay, um, I just wanted to say congratulations on that for you, Shu, getting those, uh, demolished. I do have a couple of questions that I'll ask you later in regards to some of the things, do you, that we can see. So maybe that's some of the things they wanna see, um, a little bit more of what you plan, but we'll talk offline. And guys, I know you tired. I don't know, some of it seemed like it might have been directed at certain individuals up here. But we are doing our best. I'm not sure, Mr. McGee, is that property right next to yours? Is it on other side of the lot that you already own? Is it the lot adjacent? I got lost in, in the conversation a little bit. Is it next to yours? How, is it next to your house? Or is it, is this your house, a lot, and then the lot that you want?
Right, next to my house, I'm off from the land bank. And the one that's next to the land bank is one city owned. They go sixty to fifty-six. My residence is sixty-four.
Okay, thank you. And so again, that goes back to, to us setting down and making some changes to our charter. And it may mean that we have to put some things on hold to go back and look at our ordinance and our charter. You guys are not gonna like that. But that's what you want us to do. Okay, you want us to sell some lots, you want us to sell some houses, you want us to give you this. I, I mean, I am overwhelmed with the number, and let me finish, let me finish. Because I was a resident, I am, I was a resident before setting up here. So some of the things that you're going to be allotted at this time, guess what? I'm not going to be allotted. And so I have paperwork that's been in years and years and years, but I'm not gonna be allotted that option this time around because I chose to serve you. Okay? So please understand that, that all of us have something similar to that going on because we were residents first, hurting. You have no idea what may be going on with me, just like this going on with you. I have a senior. I live between two seniors. And so when you talk about looking out for seniors and things like that, believe me, they are on our scope. But you guys have got to let us get to it. You really do. You, you, you're not being as helpful as you think you are. Especially coming up here barking at me. It, it's not, it's not helping a whole lot sometime for you to come up here and bark at us when, believe me, we are doing what we can. Yes, we have some of this other, I don't know what to call it, going on. But for the most part, you have some people sitting up here that are fighting for you and are fighting for resources. So I keep saying this every week and stressing it, that you have to also have some accountability to what has happened here, out there. And I don't care how many city councils or whatever. You have some responsibility and accountability to it as well. The coyotes, I'm with you, Ms. Washington, okay? I am totally with you. I'm gonna make it a point. I know chief is on and I hope the ordinance hear it because I've actually seen hawks and some big cats that look like they are not cats. So please understand, we are with you. I, I can't walk a dog either. I'm afraid to walk my little dog as well. I can't think right now, I'm gonna be honest, if there's some events coming up in my district. Uh, I know the school opened for Barbara this morning. They had a ball. The families I hear really enjoyed the fact that they were out there being met. I know a number of schools do that. Uh, I still ask you to participate with us on beautification. A young man is not here anymore. He mentioned CDAC. It is not twenty. It is five in each precinct, being ten in each district. But I just wanted to kinda correct him on that. Couple of other people left before we could say anything, or is he still out there? Okay, well, I hope you got that. And some of the CDACs are working, by the way, but again, we could talk offline. There were some people that left, so if you are still look, listening or watching, you came, you spoke, you did whatever. If you have property that is out there, that is also, just because you're not talking about your property up here at this podium, does not excuse you. Especially if your property are in our main visual areas. We have worked and we're working on city hall, et cetera, but you have to work on your property as well. Again, do not come up here not just for not asking, work on your property. Work on your property to make it look better, cuz those places that you talk about, those property owners, those business owners, they go out there in front of their businesses and they clean up. Whether the city, whether the city does it or not, they clean up. Whether the city does it or not, because I want my, my, my business, I want you to come in my business. I'm not saying the city's perfect. What I'm saying though is, take your responsibility like I'm taking mine.
No, Mr. McGee, Mr. McGee, Mr. McGee, Mr. McGee, Mr. McGee. Ladies and gentlemen, okay, that's what we have. In the city of Detroit, when you go to a city council meeting, if you say anything over a mumble, they drag you out of there. Why is it that people in Detroit, that surround us, a hundred and forty square miles, why is it that they respect their city council meeting? I just want y'all, they, in the city of Detroit, I had a conversation with an officer from the Detroit Police Officers Association. I asked them flat out, why you have those cops there? They said they're gonna maintain order. They will drag a police officer out of their city council meeting for disrupting the meeting. We are sensible, responsible, respectable people. Can we not yell at each other while we trying to do this, this procedural work? No one would wanna go to, to a meeting that they were having to have somebody yelling in the audience. And y'all my neighbors, so I know some of the stuff that's said up here gets you hot, but please, please. Ms. Manica, the floor is still yours unless you had, unless you have anything else to say.
I was just trying to figure out when I said wait, but, um, all I'm saying is again, be responsible, be considerate, and be understanding and work for your city as well as you're acting, asking me to work for my city. Cuz you can't say you don't see me out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manica. Madam Proton?
Good evening, everyone. Hello, Highland Park. I love you. Want to acknowledge my pastor as always. And I would like to ask that the clerk put in our minutes that that New CC died for lack of support because it was a tight vote. I tried to raise my hand and speak, but the president was so disrespectful and didn't allow me to speak. I love y'all and I asked that of the clerk and it's on record. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who have stayed here this long, I wanna thank you. These meetings cannot be a success unless the citizens come out and participate. We cannot work up here in a vacuum. There are too many issues that are important that if responsible, concerned citizens are not in the room, this happens in a vacuum. We had discussions tonight about very important issues. One that I just wanna touch on lightly is the idea of being a developer in the city of Highland Park. This is not an easy thing. I wanna explain it to you for those people in the room who are wondering how the development process works. I am no expert. Let me be the first person to tell you that. But at least for the last ten years, I've been trying to study the process. A week ago, on Wednesday, I was invited to sit at a meeting by the, um, M E D C, senior, um, community development manager in the room with the Detroit Land Bank CFO and the chief executive officer for the Oakland County Land Bank. What you find when you talk to these people is they explain the development process in a way that can be mind-boggling for the individuals who are trying to develop anywhere. They spend tens of thousands of dollars, as you heard the woman from New CC mention. They spend sometimes up to a million dollars doing pre-development work. Pre-development is a whole category. Sometimes you have to go get financing for that. So for us to assume us, me, and y'all, not, not y'all, but me and y'all, for us to assume that the development process is easier than it actually is, is a disservice. We have a trained architect in the room and he can tell you what some of these costs are. You know, my family owns a little bit of property and we, a survey for us for our property could cost up to fifteen thousand dollars. That's just a survey. That's just a piece of paper to find out what's what. So when we look at the people that are coming into our community who are already developing, like Avalon Village, like, uh, Parker Village, we need to understand that the process that, that the path that they have been on in many cases, has been a decade long and they're still not finished. But they have spent tens of thousands, sometimes half a million or more, to bring a development to the community. And what was said earlier, somebody says Superman is not coming to save us. I honestly believe that the development that really makes a difference in the community is gonna be spawned by local people. But we also have to be cognizant of what we're asking them to do. Renderings for a project can sometimes seven, seven percent, Mr. Harvey, you can deny or shake your head. So if you're doing a hundred thousand dollar project, you're gonna have to spend seven thousand dollars on plans at least. Seven percent, between seven and ten, at least. And that's before you ever dig a hole or lay a brick. So we need to understand when we ask people to do these things, when we put these demands on them, what that actually means. That means a person, before they ever get financing, before they ever get site control, before they ever have a shovel in the ground, they might have to spend somewhere upwards of twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars just to get the development process going. So I think the people in our community should, you should educate yourself more on this process because it might help to, to color your perspective. It might help you to be patient with the people, particularly the local people who are trying to make some sort of impact in the community. Because by and large, we just don't have the money. Citizens that live here per capita don't have the money. Two percent of twenty thousand dollars is a whole lot different than two percent or four hundred thousand dollars. And there are some communities within a five or ten minute drive where the median income is four hundred grand, and that ain't us. So I think we should be patient with the people who are local, who are trying to do developments because it is very expensive, it's super duper tedious. And there's a line for, to get into a development course. There's a line wrapped around this building to get into the local development courses. So let's be patient with one another. Last thing I wanna say is I am inadvertently, uh, following in a tradition of previous city council presidents before me. Uh, Mr. Patrick worked in higher education with the Wayne County Community College. Uh, Mr. Woodard worked in higher education with the Highland Park, uh, Community College. And I'm very proud to say that I am now an adjunct professor at Wayne State University. Mike Ellis School of Business, teaching dispute resolution practice and theory to students here in Detroit. So, and, and being, being a part of this community has something to do with being asked to do that work. Uh, I was raised to be of service and I'm glad to do so. Having completed all business related to the city of Highland Park, the chair is willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Meeting adjourned.